Good evening, councilors. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Subcommittee Industrial Community Development. Members here tonight are Councilor --
Okay, we saw the picture.
I am sorry. False alarm. We'll be right back to you, folks. Let's try again. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Subcommittee Industrial Community Development. Members are Councilor Daigle, Councilor Manning-Martin, Councilor McGinn, and Councilor Rozignol, also in attendance, and Councilor Turco, Councilor O'Neil, Councilor Peach, Councilor We're here for the proposed zoning amendment, amend Section 12, site plan review. I'd like to call the Community Development Director. Mr. Belavance, please. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name is Kurt Belavance, Director of Community Development. I wanted to give a brief summary of how we got here and then allow Andrew Levin, the senior planner, to talk about the proposal in more detail. So it was last year the city received a proposal called "Amazon," and that took several months and included a lot of city officials, a lot of work, a lot of meetings, and the fee for that was $100. It was really, we were trying to work with these developers. We absorb a lot of fees when we have large projects like that. So we had Andrew look at other cities and towns around us to see what they charged for site plan review, and we were by far the lowest. So what we wanted to do is look at those other communities and see how we could modify that, and that was a project that Andrew was working on in regards with the city planning board. And now that we've come through fruition, and I'm going to allow Andrew to talk about that in more details.
Mr. Belavance. Mr. Levin, would you like to come up, please? Thank you, Andrew.
Good evening. For the record, Andrew Levin, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. As Director, Belavance had mentioned, the planning board, or the Community Development Department with the planning board has been working on these site plan revisions. Earlier this year, the planning board created and convened a subcommittee to discuss these site plan revisions and to explore different options. We looked at different options that are currently happening around the North Shore. Many of these options included some sort of either base fee and then for every X amount of square feet over a certain amount, another amount, or simply just a per-square-foot fee with a minimum and a maximum. What we have come up with this evening, or what the planning board came up with and what we're presenting this evening, is a base fee for all site plan applications of $500. And in the letter that we had sent from the planning board, we've since revised, per the planning board's recommendation, what the language would be. Originally, it was using the word "envelope," so it was based off the proposed building envelope, square footage. The building, or the planning board --
If I could, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, move to receive item 8G from the regular meeting package. So moved.
Thank you, Councilman McGinn. You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. All in favor, any opposed, it's a vote. Thank you, Councilman McGinn. Back to you, Ms. Levin. Thank you.
So the planning board voted on a $500 base fee for all applications, and then for every proposed, or for every application with a proposed footprint in the original letter, it had used the word "envelope." With the discussion with the planning board, we are now using, trying to change that to footprint, it would be $50 per 1,000 square feet over 5,000 square feet. So everything up to 5,000 square feet, $500. Once you get to 5,001 to 6,000, $550, and so on. In the, and with, sorry, and I should also add that there's a max application fee of $10,000. That's putting you in the, like, 190,000-square-foot range of a building, so pretty sizable building at that point. When the proposed zoning letter that we had sent to you as well, in the newly created Section 12.18 that we were proposing, it had showed, for example, a site fee table on recommendation of the planning board. We are looking to take that out, the site fee example table, out of the actual zoning ordinance itself, and just put that onto the planning board's site plan application instead. As Kurt had mentioned, we had looked at different communities in the surrounding area. For instance, Beverly is a $35 fee per 1,000 square feet with a minimum of 350, a max of $5,000. Looking at other communities such as Danvers, it's a $1,000 base fee, and then it's 10 cents per square foot of gross floor area over 5,000 with a max of $15,000. Salem is commercial and industrial. It's 10 cents per square foot or $1,500, whatever is greater. So we felt, the planning board and community development felt that this fee structure that we've come up with tonight is equitable across all types of projects. It puts us more in line with what other communities are doing, and then with the per-1,000-square-foot caveat in there as well, it allows us for projects that are extremely large in scale to be able to get that. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Levin. I appreciate you being here. Any questions? Councilor Manning-Martin, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What would the smallest site requiring, requiring a site plan review, what would the smallest square footage be?
1,000 square feet. It's 1,000 square feet of new construction or addition.
So if any new construction under 1,000 feet, it's not $500?
That would not require a site plan review.
Could you give me an example of an existing building that we have that is 1,000 feet? What I'm getting is, I don't want to whack the little guy, you know?
So, for instance, we have a site plan review in front of us right now. Very rarely do we get, like, exactly 1,000 square feet. So, for instance, on Newberry Street right now, in front of, I'm going to mess up the name here, but Athaki Restaurant, there's a proposed Starbucks that's going in. That's a 2,500-square-foot proposed building. That would be 500 square feet, or that would be $500. But, for instance, as Kurt had mentioned, Amazon, that was 183,000 square feet. That was in front of the planning board for six months. They paid $100. Under the proposed, they would pay $9,400. Also, I should add to that as well, that was never built. So that was in front of the planning board, paid $100, six months, and then that was it.
So that was the smelling salt, that, all the work that was done for a project that large, and they were getting off with a small fee. I get it. My concern is just, I just don't want to whack the little, you know, the mom and pop, and I want to make sure that this is balanced so that they don't get whacked. Do you feel that it is?
The planning board and community development department felt that it's pretty equitable, this amount of money, across the board, if you look at what other communities are doing. We felt that, you know, sometimes it's a one-and-done type of meeting, but a lot of the times, it is a lot of back and forth between the applicant, the planning board, and the planning board staff in different reviews in session. We felt that this would encompass that. And again, across our area and communities, that we felt that this was pretty in line with what others are charging, and that allows us, because we do have a lot of commercial space in this city and area, for businesses to either expand quite largely, as we have different applications, to then get that as well with this over 5,000 square feet.
Thank you. And my last question, could you share who, whether by name or their position, who was on your review board to put this proposal forward?
It was Roy Simos, Joseph Gagnon, and John Ford.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Manning-Martin. Any other Councilman McGinn, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Drew. So you're looking to change one word, "envelope," to footprint in one place in this language? Is that correct?
That is correct. The planning board felt that the word "envelope" might be too ambiguous and might leave open too many questions. The idea here is that if you propose a seven-story building, you don't want to be hitting the applicant for every single, you know, floor of the building, rather the footprint itself. And they felt that using the word "envelope" would leave that up to too much ambiguity.
Okay. Just administratively, it's in one place in this language, right?
Yes.
Okay. And in terms of, because we don't have anything that reflects the new request, other than the recommendation from the planning board, you're saying, do not include the fee schedule in the ordinance change, correct? Because the planning board has the authority themselves to put that on the application, is that right?
They do. So I, sorry, I stand corrected. And the newly created, so it'd be, "envelope" would now be taken out in that Section 12.3 and switch to the footprint, and then in 12.18, the word, or gross floor area is used, it would be changed to footprint as well. Or, sorry, it'd be, I looked at it wrong. It's also not used there. So it's only one place, like you mentioned. But yes, the new, the amendment in front of you would be to amend Section 12.3 in adding in the language provided, which is, "All such applications shall include an application fee as calculated in Section 12.18." Then in 12.18, it breaks down the new fee, and yes, the planning board has recommended that take out the zoning, or take out the fee example and just add that to the application itself.
Yeah, you lost me. Where does 12.3 come into play? There is, so, you know, we've got a hearing on this tonight scheduled, and the drafted ordinance change makes no reference to 12.3, so.
It misspoke. 12.5 is site plan application, or application and site plan contents.
Got it. 12.5, okay. Okay. So, again, there's one change to one word, and that is the word "envelope" to footprint in one place, and drop the fee schedule, and the fee schedule's not necessary because the language essentially says the same thing. It's redundant.
The planning board felt that when we were originally going over this, that people might get confused with, what does it mean? Does it mean 5,001 square foot over, and what gets you to the next threshold? Rather than putting that into our zoning ordinance itself, which would then mean, say, however many years from now this fee decides to change, you would have to change up that whole fee schedule once again, you would take that out and you would just add that into the application for the applicant to come up with the fee.
Yeah, I, so they're not going to be, the planning board is not going to be able to change the fees without, yeah, so the planning board can't change the fees without, they don't have the authority to change the fees. They do have the authority to put the fee schedule on the application. So as long as they're consistent, I don't have a problem with it. I just, what I thought I heard you say is that they would have the flexibility of making a change in the future. Can you want to clarify on that?
No, sorry. I meant to say is that if, like you said, this is in zoning, we'd have to come back in front of the City Council to amend that, but if the fee was to change through the same process down the line, if that fee table was included in the zoning ordinance, you would have to further change that as well, potentially, like you're saying, making it a little bit more difficult than it really is.
Well, if you want to just simplify, you can agree with me and say that it's redundant, having it in here twice in two different forms.
It is redundant.
Thank you. You know, I think, I think it makes sense. I think the benchmarking with the other communities makes sense. I think the, you know, it's probably long overdue. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy with it, and I'd be ready to make a motion when the, when the time permits.
Thank you, Councilman McGinn. We'll get to you in a second, please. Councilor Rozignol, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to go back to what Councilman McGinn just mentioned, so us not having this verbiage in, in the ordinance, the planning board does not have the discretion to change the structural fee at all, correct? I just want to emphasize that point.
Yeah, exactly. That's why, it was in, it was included in zoning, in that Section 12.5, an application fee of $100 to be included. To change that fee, we're back in, or here in front of the City Council trying to amend zoning. So they could not just vote to change it. It's now in zoning. It's, would have to be a changed amendment. Amendment. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Rozignol. Any other questions of Mr. Levin? Councilor Turco, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just not looking to reinvent the wheel. I agree with the, the reason for the changes. Just, I was curious about 12.5A where it says, "In general, applicant shall," and that seems to be contradictory. So, "in general," but then it says, "applicant shall submit a complete application for site plan review." So the first two words means generally, but not always. And then the second one says, "applicant shall." So is it always, or is it sometimes?
I believe that comes down to the context of how the zoning was written. I was not looking at that because we were looking at the fee change. You make a great point on what that means, but I think that gets down to, I'd have to look at other zoning sections throughout the zoning ordinance to see if they use that as well.
So there were instances where we don't require a site plan review? Or they require the applicant to submit a site, site plan review to the clerk of the planning board?
No. I think that's just how the zoning ordinance was written. A site plan application is needed for certain criteria, always, like I mentioned, new construction over 1,000 square feet, and then a few different things as well. Change in use that requires more impervious material, wireless telecommunications as well. I did not look at that section specifically because we were looking at the zoning change, for the, just the fee change itself. Think that's just, I, again, I'd have to look at other sections of the zoning ordinance and see if they also use that language, but I don't want to stand here and try to interpret what they meant when this was originally written.
Okay. Yeah, I know. I don't mean to throw it at you like that. It just happened to catch my eye. So, you know, now that you're aware of it, if maybe you could look at it for, for the future, if we can either make it "shall" or generally accept it, whichever you prefer, but for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Any other questions of Mr. Levin? There being none, Councilman McGinn, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would move that the Industrial Community Development Committee advance this with a positive recommendation with the following language. Be it ordained by the City Council, the City of PBD as follows, that the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD entitled "Zoning Ordinance 2011" is amended through April 27, 2023, is further amended as follows. Section 1, by amending Section 12.5 entitled "Application and Site Plan Contents," to delete the language in Subparagraph A, and application fee in the amount of $100, and inserting in place thereof an application fee as referred to in Section 1218 Fee Schedule. Section 2, by creating a new Section 12-18 entitled Fee Schedules, as follows. An administrative fee for site plan review is required with every site plan review application. The fee is $500 for each site plan application, plus $50 per 1,000 square feet of proposed new building footprint over 5,000 square feet. In no case shall the application fee exceed $10,000. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. So moved.
Thank you, Councilman McGinn. You heard the motion by Councilman McGinn. Any comments on the motion? There being none, roll call vote, please.
Councilor's Daigle.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Levin. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Belavance. Appreciate it. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Peabody City Council Finance Committee. Present for the committee this evening, our councilors Gamache, Gould, Manning Martin, Turco, and myself, Councilman McGinn as chair. Also present this evening, our councilors Peach, Daigle, O'Neil, Melville, and Rozignol. We have two items on the agenda tonight. First item, ordinance amendments, section 18-20, schedule of compensation for part-time positions. Section 18-21, rates of compensation for full-time positions not subject to collective bargaining. Section 18-20A, schedule of compensation of hourly-rated positions not subject to collective bargaining. Section 18-43, fringe benefits for municipal employees of the City of Peabody excluding fire, police, electrical, and school personnel. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to you. Good evening, councilors. Hope everybody's doing well. I'm here today to request an ordinance amendment to sections 18-20, 18-21, and 18-43. We are very fortunate to have an outstanding collection of hard-working and committed people who work for our city, each providing an important contribution to our government operations. Approximately 85 of these workers, many who are here this evening, are ordinance employees. The large majority of our city employees are members of one of the 15 city unions whose contracts are negotiated through collective bargaining. We have reached agreements with nearly all of these unions, and as I typically do, I wanted to now bring forward to you, our ordinance employees, very much deserved cost-of-living adjustment. You have all heard my position on this before, so my strong support for this increase comes as no surprise, but tonight I wanted to focus on three words: retention, attraction, competition. The key phrase I'm going to stress tonight is that we need to be competitive and meet inflation to attract quality candidates and retain the hard-working, dedicated, and talented people who already work for the City of Peabody. The work culture across our country has changed dramatically since COVID, and we all know that, and it certainly has affected Peabody. Last calendar year, we had over 70 non-teacher retirements, just on the city side, and many more resignations. This exodus is unprecedented in recent city history. This culture change created immense workforce challenges in cities and towns across Massachusetts and across our country. Several departments have been short-staffed, as it is much more difficult finding qualified candidates to fill open vacancies, putting more pressure than ever on our employees. And when government operations are not working smoothly, our residents get understandably frustrated, and all of us as elected officials hear it. Statistically, the number-one factor in employee satisfaction is fair compensation. Simply put, we need to be competitive to retain our employees. Without question, municipalities are in competition with one another, and I know many of our employees have been approached by other cities and towns. Some cities, like Salem, are even offering signing bonuses. I know a few of our city employees have received higher offers from our neighboring communities to leave Peabody for higher pay. We subscribe to the Mass Municipal Association website, and this is a monthly newsletter that goes out and that lists a whole number of things, but quite a few of the pages are devoted to job opportunities, employment opportunities. Right now, the last time I looked, there were over 300 job opportunities for a number of key, important positions, ordinance positions, many of them are here today. Just to give you one example, our finance director in a western city, city of the western part of the state, that's a little bit smaller than Peabody, just put out a finance director position for $165,000. So I want to be very clear, competition among cities and towns is very real. Retention must be prioritized. The reasons I believe this are many. There is significant institutional knowledge in our ordinance employee group that we have here tonight. Many in this group are retirement-eligible today, and we hope to incentivize them to stay employed here full-time. The cost of turnover is significant. Losing institutional knowledge can set cities back. Finding qualified candidates has become extremely challenging, and overcoming the learning curve is time-consuming and puts extreme pressure on all other employees within those individual departments. Our real concern is that if any one of our ordinance employees were to resign or retire, and we were unable to fill the position internally, which I always like to do, but if we can't, I anticipate that I will have to come back to the council for a larger increase than 3% prior to posting and filling that position. City government is its people, and we are very fortunate to have the people in this room working for our city. They care about their jobs and take pride in their work. They want Peabody to be successful. The vast majority live here in Peabody, most grew up here, raised or are raising their family here, and nearly all have family that live in our city. And we need our employees to continue to choose to work for Peabody. We have been working hard over the past few months to have consistency within our salaries and to properly compensate our employees by looking at job responsibilities and management responsibilities. There are three positions I'm asking for approval to increase salaries and move them to their proper salary tier. Sharon Cameron, our Health and Human Services Director, has taken on additional responsibility, and hopefully soon there'll be a Division of Social Services that we're going to be introducing shortly, and we wanted to move her up to the appropriate tier. Frank Ian, our IT Director, has taken on more responsibilities in city departments, and we wanted to move him to the appropriate tier that he should be under. As well as Brian Grant. Brian is our Park and Recreation Supervisor. We wanted to put him in line with our Cemetery Supervisor, our Golf Course Supervisor, to make it more consistent, and we felt that that was appropriate. I think all of you know their individual work, and I'm happy to answer any questions on this specific request. Also, as part of tonight's request, is to add five positions to our ordinance. The first three is under the Division of Social Services that we're looking to move forward with. That would be part of our Health Department and Human Services under the direction of Sharon Cameron. It's funded through a combination of opioid settlement funds and the Healthy Peabody Collaborative, and approximately $30,000 contribution from the city. I think all of you are familiar with the opioid settlement. We've now, for the last couple of years, have been receiving money through a collective agreement, nationwide agreement. We were one of the early ones to actually sign on to this opioid settlement. We all know the devastation and effect that it has had on our communities, many individual families, people that we care about certainly have struggled, and we signed on to this class-action lawsuit. Settlement has been reached with a number of defendants, and now we are going to be receiving settlement amounts, our settlement funds, for the next 15 years. We expect additional settlements to come with additional defendants in the future, so I think that number will rise. So we'd be taking those funds that can be used for a limited number of purposes to create this Division of Social Services. Also, as part of that, it would also include the Healthy Peabody Collaborative, which receives funding through state and federal grant. Those would be consolidated into one division, and it would be under the direction of Sharon Cameron. There are, and you recall, at the last meeting, you transferred money that was in our account, sent it that into a specific account directed for these settlement proceeds. So that was done at the last meeting. These three positions I'm seeking approval for, for the division, is a Director of the Division of Social and Substance Abuse Services. That will be Sarah Grinnell. Sarah's been kind of the architect behind this whole proposal. We've had a number of meetings over the last few months. Councilor Turco has been at a couple of those, weighing in, and it's been Sharon Cameron, Chief Griffin, Sarah, Beth O'Donnell, Mike Jingeris, a couple of other people have been working on this proposal now for a few months. But Sarah has been the real architect behind it. It's been working for our city for a number of years, and we'd be looking to her to take over the Director of this particular division. a mental health abuse clinician, which we would advertise the position, and third would be a care coordinator, behavioral health and substance abuse, another position that we would be posting to bring someone in. Sandy Drover, I know all of you are familiar with her great work that she's done for the city. She would remain doing the work as the Youth Outreach Coordinator, but she would be a part of this department. So this would be a division of four people. Sarah, in her new role as Director. Sandy remains as the Youth Outreach Coordinator, then we'd have these two additional positions. We really believe that this would fit a need. It's, I believe, unprecedented that a city has taken this step to create this division. I know a number of cities and towns, really all cities and towns, are trying to come up with their plans as the best way to utilize this money, and again, it can be used from a few different areas, but we believe this is the way to reach families, to reach individuals in need, and to help them get the services that they need and demand. And we believe this is the way to go. So I'm excited about this going forward. The other couple of positions, two positions would be specific to the North Shore Children's Museum. Ally Hadark is here to be able to answer any specific questions. The two positions we'd be looking to add would be Museum Community Engagement Manager and Museum Visitor Experience Program Manager. We believe that those two positions would allow us to expand hours, do some initial work, and then bring in some significant money by bringing on those positions full-time. We believe that it would be a direct correlation to bringing money into the city and to continue to support that. Things have gone very well, as all of you know, at the Children's Museum. We've been sold out for weeks. We're looking to see how things go this summer. Will be an interesting test case, how things go for the summer, but we're really happy and pleased, and the demand is there. We want to meet that demand, and that's why we're moving forward with these two additional positions, to add some hours and add some different programs. So really excited about that. Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I wanted to ask Sharon Cameron, Sarah Grinnell, and Chief Griffin to come up to speak about the Division of Social Services, and also Ally Hadark is certainly available to answer any questions. Mike Jingeris, our Finance Director, is here. Beth O'Donnell, our Human Resources Director, certainly ready and willing and happy to answer any questions on any of these topics, but if it's okay, I thought this would be a good opportunity now to have Sarah, Chief Griffin, and Sharon to come up.
Please proceed with that presentation.
Mr. Chairman, motion to receive, the handout.
Councilors, you've heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed, a vote? Give me a minute to distribute these.
Good evening, everybody. Tom Griffin, I'm the Chief of Police. I'm going to present first regarding the Division of Social Services. In its basic form, this division is a classic community policing, problem-solving type of a strategy that we're going to employ. We're going to put together, hopefully put together, a team of people to help address and reduce the mental health and substance abuse by members of our community. Prior to the pandemic, there was always a need for mental health and substance abuse, but since that time, the needs have increased exponentially. And as you can see on the PowerPoint slide up there, just last year, in 2022, we responded to 923 calls that had behavioral health concerns, just at the Police Department alone. Eighty-four overdoses were recorded. We believe that's a low number for us, because with the availability in our hand, we're being told by folks that we talk to that not everybody contacts the police when there's an overdose episode, so we believe that number is higher. Any clinician or substance abuse counselor that we get involved with this will be working on those types of problems to reduce those numbers here in the city. We actually think, working with our partners with the Essex County Collaborative, as you'll see in the handout, they're going to inform us on people who are Peabody residents who actually have an overdose issue anywhere in the county, which will improve our ability to bring services to those folks. And in addition to both the Police Department and the Health Department, pretty much every department within the city at one point or another is touched by either mental health or different types of substance abuse, whether it's through trying to find food for folks or housing or different other stresses that are creating problems for them. So hopefully by applying this type of strategy, those numbers will go down, and the overall health and wellness of our community will improve. In addition to just the statistics and just my own anecdotal experiences at the Police Department, you can see with this next slide, the Leahy Hospital did a needs assessment for 2022 as it related to Peabody, and over 40% of the folks in Peabody have reported to them that their substance use has improved, I'm sorry, has increased since the pandemic. So the pandemic has really caused a lot of problems for a lot of people, put a lot of stress on a lot of people, and it's starting to manifest itself out in the community with repeated mental health issues and repeated substance abuse issues. Inpatient discharge rates for mental health conditions for people under 18 are actually significantly higher for Peabody than the average of the state. We're at 1,034 versus 72 in 2019, and emergency room discharge rates for substance abuse disorders among those under 18 were higher also across the state. So, as well as chronic conditions for elders, that we hope to be able to address with some of these issues by having this team in place that's going to approach these problems, help solve those problems, get these folks to the right places that they need to be, so that we don't have to have them experiencing bad days again in the future. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sharon.
My name is Sharon Cameron. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services, and I want to thank you all for your time tonight. We're going to be discussing in a few moments funding for this project in detail, but I thought it was important to start off by recognizing that a significant portion of the funding for this project comes from the Attorney General Settlement with the opioid manufacturers, distributors, and retailers. This funding comes to us through the pain and the loss experienced by thousands of people and families throughout our state and in our community. As our working group continues to plan for the most effective use of these funds, we start with recognizing our obligation to those who have suffered by committing to ensuring that help is available to those who need it and by strengthening our efforts to prevent substance misuse. So the mission statement for this new division would be for us to support the well-being of all Peabody residents by identifying their needs, providing resource referrals in crisis stabilization, and by coordinating access to physical, mental, and behavioral healthcare services. The Division of Social Services also coordinates substance use prevention programs within the city, including opioid use prevention and opioid use harm reduction programs and treatment programs, as well as pri- treatment programs, as well as primary prevention programs that foster positive youth development. The mayor mentioned that Sarah Grinnell has been identified to be the Director of this division, and you all know Sarah as the Director of the Healthy PBD Collaborative. Her position will be restructured under this proposal. Sarah has over 18 years of experience managing substance use prevention programs, but her knowledge of the community and the connections with so many of our local agencies and service providers that she has built over the past 15 years that she has been in the city of PBD makes her an outstanding choice to lead this proposed new Division of Social Services. As Sarah leads you through the structure rules and budget in the slides ahead, I also wanted to let you know that this proposal aligns very closely with the terms defined by the state of Massachusetts for allowable activities for the opiate settlement funds. Our focus will be on supporting individuals in treatment and recovery, connecting people with behavioral healthcare, implementing harm reduction programs, and expanding our substance use prevention programs. So I'm going to turn it over to Sarah to talk to you in more detail about our structure. Actually, I'm going to talk to you about the structure first. So you can see the division sits within the Health Department and over on the left side, the Youth Outreach Coordinator Sandy Drover would be part, the Healthy PBD Collaborative activities would be encompassed in this new structure. But the new positions that would be proposed for this division include the Substance Use Disorder Behavioral Healthcare Coordinator and a licensed clinical social worker, as advised by the Social Services Commission, all under the directorship of Sarah.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go into a little bit more detail about the structure of the division and talk a little more about the specifics. I met with many of you last fall and we talked about the work that the Healthy PBD Collaborative has done with Sandy and I and the community over the last 15 years, and we talked about the continuum of care and that we've really focused our efforts on prevention. The Health Department, the Healthy PBD Collaborative, the Fire Department, the Police Department, and community partners have worked across the continuum. They've worked through identification and intervention, access to treatment, and recovery supports. However, we haven't been able to do so in a cohesive and strategic manner. We haven't had the funding and we haven't had the structure. Under this new division, we would be able to be more cohesive and more strategic because we have this funding and we have the structure now. We're not looking to replicate any of the services offered in our city and our surrounding towns. What we're looking to do is to connect our residents with those services and to support them through the process. Anybody that has had a family member that struggled with mental health or substance use issues knows how difficult it is to navigate that process and to see it through. We want to provide that support with our, to our residents, and we want to use the funding that caused the damage to our community to do so. The last piece I want to discuss from this slide is we will be establishing a Social Services Commission. The mayor will be appointing representatives from the Police, Fire, Health, School Departments, Council on Aging, and City Council. We'll have broader membership that will include the Recreation and Library Departments, healthcare providers, social service agencies, community members, and those with substance use disorder lived experience. The Commission will advise, support, and monitor the division's strategic plan, assist with developing the division's long-term goals, and assist with the promotion of services. On the next slide, you will see a breakdown of the settlement funds that will be received over the next 17 years. The damage that has been done to our community through these distributors and manufacturers have been done over a long period of time, and I believe that the money was structured in this way to help stabilize our community and to help support the residents. This, the $2.7 million that we'll be currently receiving through fiscal year 39 will go directly back to our residents that are either, you know, suffering with substance use disorders, struggling with mental health issues, or the family members that are having their own struggles or trying to support their family. This is a long-term plan. Sharon mentioned, and I believe the mayor mentioned as well, that we think this is the start. We anticipate that there will be additional settlements. There are also monies that went directly to the state that will be then distributed to the cities and towns once the state develops their strategic plan and will be eligible to apply for those sources of funding as well. The next three slides, I'm going to provide an overview of the budget for fiscal years 24, 25, and 26. You'll see in fiscal year 24, we'll be using a little under $200,000 of the opioid settlement funds to support the division. You can see the next column over is our DPH grant. That is our substance abuse prevention funding. As I mentioned last fall, our funding was initially for $125,000 over for eight years. However, it's been doubled for fiscal years 23, 24, and 25, so we're receiving $250,000. And there is potential for that to increase past fiscal year 25. This budget is based off of fiscal year 24. And then the next column over, you will see the Essex County Outreach Grant. That's a regional partnership. It's based out of the city of Newburyport, and the chief mentioned that. They've created a database so we're able to better serve the residents of PBD that either suffer a mental health issue or an overdose in a different community. It's able, you know, we're able to better support our residents through that grant. We've been meeting with them and they have committed that if we develop, we establish this division and we bring on a social worker, that there's some room for some collaboration there and we'll be able to receive the $25,000 for fiscal year 24. And there's potential for that to continue through fiscal year 27. The last column indicates the city funds. $7,500 was originally allocated for Interface, which is a referral to treatment program that the city's been utilizing. The social worker and the care coordinator will be resuming the role that Interface previously played, so that $7,500 will go towards supporting their salaries. The other $25,000 actually comes from the indirect funds from our substance abuse prevention grant through BSAS, and those monies will be used to serve the direct care. You can see, I think, I would say most importantly in this budget is that we have $10,000 that's going to be allocated in fiscal year 24 for scholarships. The scholarships will be for PBD residents that are accessing recovery services. It'll be to help support them for the uninsured costs of accessing treatment. For me, that's the initial goal of this division, is to get that program up and running and to help support our residents. It is, it is our primary goal. Lastly, I just want to say that you can, on the personnel you'll see in the next slide, that we're only funding partial year salaries, knowing that we wouldn't be able to hire as of July 1st. That is the increase that you see in the fiscal year 25 budget here. So we're using some additional opioid settlement funds. Our DPH grant will again be at the $250,000, and then the Essex County Outreach, we have at zero because that was only a one-year agreement. As I previously mentioned, there is a chance that that will continue into fiscal years 25 and 26. I also want to mention that you'll see in a later slide that we're going to be doing a lot of evaluation to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our residents, and the scholarship program will be assessed. And that number, you know, likely may need to increase, and as more of our residents are finding out about that scholarship program, we'll be using the opioid settlement funds to support the residents. The ask in fiscal year 26 of the city is higher. That is assuming that our BSAS funding goes back down to the initial contract level of $125,000, and it is for the flat funding of the AG opioid settlement funds through fiscal year 39, which would be $160,000. I don't want to make any promises I can't keep. However, we do anticipate there'll be more settlements and that would decrease the ask of the city. I think the other piece that's really hard to convey sometimes, just looking at the numbers in black and white, is through the creation of this division, we're going to be open to applying for more funding in different resources that we haven't been able to do so in the past, and we're going to be able to prove the need in a way that we haven't been able to. And we're going to be able to assess the need in the way that we haven't been able to, to figure how we can best serve our residents. Here's the program evaluation slide. We'll be assessing and tracking the number and demographics of individuals served, the types of referrals that are made. This one's really important to me in particular because this is how we'll be able to better inform our strategic plan moving forward. We'll know what our city needs and what our residents need, the number of direct clinical hours provided, the length of time until initial service delivery. That's a big one because right now it's difficult to access services, and we want to break down those barriers for our residents. The length of time until connection to follow-up care, the number of primary prevention events and participants reached, the number of harm reduction events and participants reached, and lastly, the number of scholarship applications received and scholarships awarded. And the budgeted amount will be adjusted based off of the findings. Here's my ambitious timeline. I like to say that, you know, really bringing on the social work and the substance, the care coordinator will really make a difference in the lives of many of our residents. And I would say my first two goals are 1A and 1B. 1A being to bring those two people on board and 1B to begin awarding those scholarships. You'll see here that we have the scholarships, you know, being launched at an event in January. However, I would anticipate by the end of the summer, we'll be, we'll have a process of accepting applications that's very simple for residents and awarding that money out. That'll be the first charge of the Social Services Commission. I want to thank everybody. The councilors have been a huge support of Sandy and I's and for our prevention efforts over the last 15 years. People don't typically stay in these roles that long. We're very grateful to be part of this city. This has been a goal of both of ours. I know Sharon and the mayors and the chiefs as well, is to support our residents. PBD is an amazing city, and I just want to thank you for your support, and I think the use of these funds to give it directly back to our community is the best use possible.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counsel. Happy to answer any questions on any of these items, all these items. Ally Hadock, the Director of the North Shore Children's Museum, is here as well to certainly answer any questions and more specific information you may need regarding her plans for the two additional full-time employees. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it over to you for the next steps.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Questions from the committee? Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Temporarily, I'm just going to stick with the opioid positions. And I, you know, I just want to say, I mean, you've all heard my story. You know how this has directly affected my family. But, I mean, this is something that we've been looking at since the late 80s, early 90s, since the advent of OxyContin. And every year, every so often, we talk about how we're going to try to solve the opioid problem, but something else takes precedent, whether it be a financial crisis or whether it be a pandemic. And, you know, maybe rightfully so, but, I mean, ultimately, I think it's, the money's here. As Sarah, maybe Sharon stated, you know, a lot of people paid dearly to get this money. So I think, although it's not completely able to fund, and there is a portion of city money that needs to go into this, I think it's minimal, and I'm very confident that Sharon and Sarah will both continue to seek out grants. I think, you know, going back to the opioid epidemic, I think the primary problem was we got, we got the OxyContin off the market, and we never addressed the issue with those that were already addicted to OxyContin. So, you know, again, you know, with relative to my family, my sister, two brothers, both addicted to OxyContin, got off it, but became addicted to heroin instead. And that was because OxyContin wasn't available. And, you know, good people, all my siblings, very good people, you would have loved them if you met them, did a lot of wrong things. Robbed, started at home, robbed from, you know, people around the city, you know. You see it every day in the police reports. You see, you know, home breaks. You see people rummaging through cars. You see assault batteries. You see robberies on the street. Those are generally addicts, looking for money. I can't say all, but most good people addicted to something that they just don't know how else to get the money. So I know that, you know, we're going to look at money, we're going to look at, you know, as we should, you know, what the ultimate cost to the city is financially, but I think there's just so much more than the dollar bill that we could look at by even saving one, two, five. I think the chief mentions, you know, 85 overdoses. All three of my siblings overdoses. Save one if you can.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Other members of the committee. Counselor Manning-Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Sarah. When will the city absorb the cost of these new positions and their pensions? When will we begin to absorb the cost?
So in fiscal year 39, that would be the last year of the settlement funds currently. So the total cost of the positions would be absorbed at the city at that point. So we're, you know, we're looking at 17 years from now. Prior to that, in fiscal year 26, there is an increased cost to the city, and that's due to us evening out the distribution of the opioid settlement funds for the subsequent 15 years, and also our substance abuse prevention funding goes back to the original contract level of $125,000.
Thank you. And your positions now are all grant, the current ones are, Healthy PBD Collaborative are grant-funded, is that correct?
Yes.
So your current salaries now, you are not paying into the pension system, correct?
No, we are paying into the pension system, yes.
Under the grant?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that was one of those, okay, that's right. Hmm. Okay. And so how many positions are there currently in the Healthy PBD Collaborative that are already paying into the pension system?
There are two.
Two, so you'll be adding three more.
Two more.
Two more.
My position would be changing. My title would be changing.
Your title will be changing, but in this document, I see your title. Your old title is still there. Is that correct?
I do not believe so, no.
Let's just check.
It is? Okay. Oh, in the, okay. I believe it's not funded, though. I'm sorry, I didn't know which document you were looking at. I believe it's not currently funded. The money was shifted, correct? Yes.
Okay, so there are two already in the pension system, and this will add two more. And the reason I ask is, it's a very sensitive subject. You know I've been an advocate and a cheerleader for your program since its inception, and I don't want to get into the benefits or anything other than what can the taxpayers afford. And the reason I bring this up is just because just quite recently, I don't know, it was two weeks ago or a month ago, the Pension Board voted against a one-time 2% COLA, Cost of Living, increase for existing pensioners. And I think it was $300 a year, just one time. And they voted against it because our pension system was in such dire straits. So I will always, from this point forward, be very hard-pressed to add any new positions to the budget until we get a handle on moving forward, being able to pay cost-of-living increases for pensioners. And we can't do that if we continue to add positions and give salary increases 3% across the board to people who make six figures. And I sound like a broken record at this point. This isn't the first year I've said it. It's not the second. Who knows? Maybe it will be the last, but I've certainly said it easily half a dozen times. So again, I'm really hard-pressed to add any new positions to this budget because of what we were just faced with. what we were just faced with within the last few weeks. And it's fresh in my mind and I don't want to forget it. So, again, you, your program is wonderful and everything Counselor Turco says is true. But that's where I'm coming from. And I thank you again for everything you've done and the 15 years you've given the city and your team has been phenomenal. And I hope in some, some manner, you'll be able to continue to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Manning-Martin. Other members of the committee? Other councilors? Counselor Peach?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Sarah. Can't go anywhere yet. Sarah, I've had the pleasure of knowing you for a long time and getting to know the work that you've done for the city of PBD. Can you just speak to a little bit? Maybe not everyone's aware of how the Healthy PBD Collaborative started through grants, grants which have run out multiple times. And you've been, you're an excellent grant writer. You've been very successful in funding your program through grants without costing the city any money. And I appreciate you being forthcoming and saying this is the reality, but, you know, of course, I know you'd continue to work on grants. This is helpful to know. This is a possibility for us as a city to take on costs, but if you could talk a little bit about that so people at home know.
Of course. So, our initial funding was actually Sharon Cameron wrote the grant back in 2008. And that was for substance abuse prevention. It was primarily an enforcement grant. That was for $80,000. And since that time, we have increased our budget up to, you know, upwards of $300,000 through both state, federal grant funding. We've diversified our funding. I don't think Sandy and I have ever said no to anyone who has asked us to do anything. We've done this through summer food service program. We've done this through law enforcement grants. We've been able to, I at one point was, I monetized all of our volunteer hours. I think that's a piece that's not reflected in here is the support of our community, our city employees, our councilors, our elected officials. Everybody has supported us. But yes, no, our grant funding has continued. We have been, you know, held up on a national level for success. I've been able to pivot a little bit into the law enforcement grant-writing field and have been pretty successful, I'd say, right, doing that, which was, was not my area of expertise at all. But I feel like grant writing is grant writing. So, I really do, I don't like to promise things, but there, you know, I have a list on my computer and there's at least 10 funding sources on there that we would be eligible to apply for that we just haven't had the capacity to do so. So, yes, there is a cost to the city, but if we don't move forward, there's also a loss to the city that I think is important to acknowledge.
Thank you. I really appreciate you just outlining that and making it known that you've run a successful program through applying and being very creative as to what grants you can apply for and use funding to continue the program and expand it significantly since the start many years ago. So, I appreciate that. I think this is an excellent add to the city. I understand Counselor Manning's reservations. I share them for, for other positions to be added, but I think this is, this is an area we know nationally, grant funding will just continue to increase. And we, as Counselor Turco put it, we do need to do something. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Other councilors? Counselor Turco?
Mr. Chairman, just looking for clarification on, on your format here. Are we just speaking about opioid, the, this program itself right now or are we delving into the entire document? Or do you want to finish this section and move forward?
Yeah, so what's before us, Counselor Turco? Thank you for that question. It's because it is a little confusing. We have three separate ordinance changes requested. The, the multiple things that the mayor mentioned in his presentation encompassed everything in the first ordinance change that inclusive of the opioid, or I should say that the creation of the new department. So, what's before us is the request to change the Section 1820 in its entirety. So, we can't, we're not able to dissect out a portion of it related to, to what was just presented. We need, we need to address the, the overall request to, to, to change this ordinance. So, that includes the salary changes and the changes that the mayor indicated relative to the salary adjustments for the Director of IT and so forth. Does that, does that help?
Yeah, thank you. I just didn't want to, I just to move on from the subject if anybody else had any questions about this particular program, but I am willing to continue on with the rest of the document. But let me just say lastly, with regard to this program, we're handing this to Sharon Cameron and Sharon, excuse me, and Sarah. And I, my confidence level is there that they will find the remainder of the funding and that in 2026, we will look at this and say that it's funded through outside grants in the opioid epidemic. I'm confident in that, in the opioid settlement, excuse me. So, I'm confident in that, but that's the last thing I'll, I'll say on that. And I do support those three positions. As far as the rest of the document, I do have some questions and concerns about that.
This is, this is the right time to get those questions on the table, Counselor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I must, through, through you to Mr. Gingrich. I think most of my comments are going to go to Mr. Gingrich. Gingrich, Gingrich?
Mr. Gingrich?
Hello, is that Mike? All right, I'm going to start at the very beginning. Emergency management assistance. I believe there were four of those that we, we created maybe last year or is that the one under it? Or was it three plus the emergency management director that were created? Can you remind me of that? It might have been last year?
We, I believe we funded three plus the director.
Thank you. Can you remind me who we attributed those three positions, those three? I look at them as stipends, which kind of...
Yeah, the stipends. We've only used, utilized the director, the fire chief, and the IT director as the assistant so far.
So, the fire chief, the assistant IT director, and what was the third one?
That's it. We haven't, we haven't filled it. We haven't utilized those funds for further.
And do we typically give raises to stipends?
We generally do just, whenever we have COLAs, we just take everything and bring it up so that, you know, five or 10 years from now, it's not lagging behind.
Okay, and who was the current emergency management director?
Chief Daley.
And you may not know this, Mike, but I'll ask you, do we intend on keeping that with the fire chief upon Chief Daley's retirement?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Move on to the, the next page, Mike. The assistant farm stand manager, that's a salary correction up $7,000 inclusive of the 3% raise. So, is that just raising the top end of the ordinance that we're looking at or?
That was one of the positions that we were fitting into the, that particular tier. So, it was similar responsibilities to the assistant director of the children's museum and the skating rink.
Okay, why does it say June of 23 next to it?
I, I utilized the, the date there just to denote that's something that's changed beyond the 3%.
All right, next one. Parking clerk, police department, which is currently on the city website. I've actually had several people reach out to me to see if it's available. Why are we increasing the salary of an unfilled position by $10,000? $10,500 to be correct there.
Again, that was posted at a $60,000 range in order to attract someone for that position as part of this whole new parking program that we're going to implement. And it's, again, it's something that's out in the market trying to get filled.
And are you saying, I can ask you, Mayor, are you saying that nobody was interested for that job at $50,000 a year? They'll only take 60?
Well, I did want to mention that we are starting, we had our introductory meeting with the meters, kiosks, lighting, and EV parking spots program that we're going to be starting this summer. We expect it to be completed in September. Part of that program will be new meters, kiosks to pay, an app that can be utilized like other surrounding communities have, that will be able to, to make that process a much, a much easier process for people and certainly something that's been asked for by the businesses. During COVID, we shut down the parking meters. We really haven't taken an income over the last couple of years. We think that there's going to be significant income generated through this new program and we felt that we needed to attract the right type of person for that position because I think there's going to be with the new programs, new technology, new systems that we're going to be implementing, how we felt that that would be a position that should fall in that range.
Thank you. I mean, I'll just say upfront, I disagree. I just think that, you know, it's an entry-level position and I know a lot of people would, would jump on that for 50,000, but I digress on, on that. The next one is the enterprise fund manager, Mayor. Is that new? I don't ever recall seeing an enterprise fund manager. And if so, who is that? Through you to Mr. Gingrich, Mr. Chairman.
There's, there's no one currently in that position. That position was put into ordinance 10 or 15 years ago as a concept to have a person oversee the enterprises. And it was a concept at the time and it was never brought forward. It's not funded.
Yeah, Counselor, it's not funded. That was something that predated my term as mayor and it's not something that I've really ever really looked at or delved into deeply, but it's been a part of the ordinance and it's always been kept in there.
Okay, so you have no objection to removing it from the ordinance or, or you do?
I mean, I certainly not going to object. I think it's, I don't think it hurts us by having the ordinance in there if it's not funded. It would have to be something that would be approved by the city council during a budget. I'm not bringing that forward at this time. I don't envision doing that anytime soon, but I don't think it's something that hurts us by having it in there. And some point down the line, maybe it makes economic sense to do so, but, you know, certainly that's the will of the board. It's not something that is funded, not something I'm planning to bring forward.
Okay. The next one down the line, Superintendent of Parks and Forestry, which you mentioned was Brian Grant. I've always felt that, you know, with Parks and Recreation and Forestry and under one umbrella, it's, it's a lot for that department. It's, it's a lot for one person to handle. So, I do support a raise. I don't know if I could support a $12,000 a year raise. I think that's pretty significant for anybody. I'll just, you know, while I'm touching on the $12,000, I'll touch on Director of IT, an increase of $15,000, Director of Health Human Services of $17,000. These are one-year increases. So, you, I have a general disagreement with any raises of that magnitude for any one individual. And I know what you're trying to do, Mayor, and Mr. Gingrich, I know you're trying to make them, as you said, equity counts. I just also believe in, in, I mean, we have, we're looking at a $309 tax increase on average in a week. And whatever I can do to curtail that, I'm going to do. So, if it offends anybody here, I apologize. I have the utmost respect for, for anybody, for, for all the people in this room. I just don't see, some of these raises are pretty drastic. Those three in particular, I should say. So, I'll move on to public health nurse administrator. Through you to Mr. Gingrich. That one's a decrease and I'm confused by that. 2022, 96.6, and it goes down in 2023 to 94.6. So, there's a $2,000 decrease in the salary.
Yeah, when we were going through and evaluating different positions, that one in particular, we, we just determined it was better aligned than the other group, in the, in the group that we reduced it to. It hadn't been filled yet, so, at that point.
Okay, so this public health nurse administrator has, has not been filled for how long?
It hadn't been. And we were going through union negotiations to move a particular person into, into that position.
Okay, and again, I'm moving forward because I know this is in the budget next week, but is, did I read correctly or do I remember correctly that there's, you're adding three of those positions in the new budget, Mayor? Or either the three clerks to the, to the nurses? And this is separate from those three clerks? Okay. So, this public health nurse administrator would oversee the three clerks? Is that the intention or oversee all the nurses? How's this work?
Good evening. Beth O'Donnell, Director of Human Resources. Sharon can jump in if I say something incorrectly, but that, that is not the intention. The, the clerks, counselor work for the school nurses and this position is the public health nurse in the health department.
Okay, so, again, the three new positions are the clerks in the school department, but they're in our budget, correct?
Because they work for the school nurses that are in our budget, in the schools.
Yeah, that's all I was just looking for. Let me move on to, I'm sorry, Beth, that's, that's all I have for you. I wish I had more. The minimum wage positions, Mike. I see that, you know, we're leaving a lot at minimum wage.
Counselor Turco, point of, point of order on that, that's a, yeah, that's a different section. So, if we could, just to get everybody focused on the same document, if we could...
Yeah, so I'll, I'll stick to this and I guess, you know, you know, we're, we're always respectfully, Mayor, I'm always going to disagree that, I think that each of these positions in the ordinance should be separately vetted and raises should be handed out as they are at most organizations on a per-person basis. I think that every department here knows their staff and knows who deserves a three or a four or a zero or a 1% raise and who doesn't. I particularly don't know that. I just know that to Counselor Manning-Martin's point, two weeks ago, we did hear from retirees that, and we did, or at least I did, I supported the position of the, of the retirement board that they, they couldn't rightfully give an additional 2% raise. So, I feel very uncomfortable with, you know, some of these salary levels and a different format, I may support it. I would be more inclined to support this instead of a 3, 3, and 3, at a 2, 2, and 2. And I know nobody here wants to hear that, but you also, I don't think the taxpayers want to hear next week that, that I'm going to give them a $309 average increase and I didn't do anything to try to curtail it a little bit. So, the best I can do is to suggest to this subcommittee that we go with 2, 2, and 2 rather than the 3, 3, and 3. And others may have a different opinion on that. So, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Other committee members? Counselor Manning-Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I threw you to Counselor Turco. I appreciate your effort to compromise, Counselor Turco. My concern is that 3% for somebody making $45,000, $50,000 is a lot of money to them. So, to go down 1%, I wouldn't be able to support that. It's the idea of the inequities at the, again, same thing that you and I have said for the last several years is giving 3% to people who make six figures is, you know, is a, is a larger sum of money than it is to someone at, at 50,000. I don't want to reduce, I wouldn't want to reduce somebody at, you know, making 50,000 to get 2% instead of 3%. And I, I don't think that that compromise attacks and addresses the issue at hand, but I do appreciate your effort to try and come to a compromise, but I wouldn't be able to support that. I do have a question. Since we have identified a couple of positions that are not filled, I'd like to find out how many others that are listed before us in this document, looking for the ordinance change, are not filled. I know the business liaison is not filled. We learned that the enterprise fund manager is not filled. Mr. Jengris, do we have any others that are not filled?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I could go through the list and report back, but there, there, I'm sure there's a handful.
I'm sorry, you're sure there's a handful? Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion then to um remove what we do know that has been uh in the budget for several years and not filled at this point, is the enterprise fund manager. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to remove that from this ordinance language. So moved.
Uh, Counselor Manning Martin, on the motion, uh, before we proceed with that, do, would it make more sense um to do that when we vote the entire thing? Just to take that, strike that line item, or do you?
I'd prefer we just take care of it as it, as it's before us right now.
Okay, you've heard the motion from Counselor Manning Martin. On the motion, seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Turco.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamash.
No.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries, 4 to 1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I continue?
You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to remove the position of business liaison from this document, asking for the ordinance change. So moved.
On the motion from, you've heard the motion from, on the motion, Counselor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through you to Mr. Jengris. Mike, that is um currently stipend pay? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And um, what is the stipend, please?
So that was a position that, you know, we have discussed multiple years. Um, I was looking for opportunities to save money and, and um, now I spoke about this last year and the year before. Um, I didn't want to go ahead, you know, Counselor Manning Martin has talked about pensions and and other fringe benefits, and I felt hiring that position uh would have been at a significant cost between benefits and everything would have been over $100,000. We give a stipend of $15,000, maybe $18,000 uh to Chris Ryder, um, who is already doing a lot of those responsibilities already and has done good work with that. Uh, I just felt that it wasn't necessary to hire that position, and it was an attempt to save funding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again, it's not funded, just like the enterprise fund was not funded. It's really has no effect on the budget that we're going to be taking on next week. I don't see any objection to it, to, to remove them. It's just, it doesn't hurt us to have it in there for the future. Again, recognizing cities changing and, and there could be potential needs in the future. But again, those bud, those positions are not budgeted. They have no impact on the budget.
Mr. Mayor, through you, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Yeah, um, on the motion to Mr. Jengris, does, would removing that have any impact on the stipend funding, or is it?
Yeah, I, I believe so, because part of, part of the reason for the stipend is that particular slot.
So if the slots, if the slot's not there, the stipend's not available. So it would, it would basically negate our ability to fund it as it currently is funded.
Exactly.
Thank you. Nothing for, yeah, Counselor Manning Martin.
Thank you on that. Um, so the business liaison position is not funded, but if we, and it's not in the budget, but if we remove it, its title from the budget, monies will be taken from the budget that's not there? Did I get that right?
There's a stipend in the budget based on this position and it's part of the part-time wages in community development.
So there's an $18,400 stipend for Chris Ryder to do the business liaison work, and then there's more in community development that has been?
No, that's where, that's where, that's where that funding is. It's in community development.
That's where the $18,400, okay. So that stipend, I think, did we issue that, we issued that last year. Has there been a pension justification received by the Pension Board for that $18,400?
Ye- yes, I believe so. I believe that um it's retirement eligible.
Yes, it is retirement eligible because the money is being taken out of his pay, but it requires a pension justification letter to be sent. That's what I'm asking. If a pension justification letter is not sent, then his money will not go towards the pension.
Oh, I believe that's happened, yes.
I'm sorry?
I believe that has happened.
So a pension justification has gone in. So last year, that position got a 3% raise and an 18 point, uh, $18,400 raise on top of that. It wasn't a stipend. It was presented to us as a stipend. It was a stipend, but when it gets into the pension system and there's a pension justification, I believe, as it was explained to me by the pension manager when I inquired last year, that's $18,400, and then on top of the 3%, I think it was like a 25% raise. And if he's, pension monies is coming out and he's gotten a pension justification, then that was a 25% salary increase. So these stipends are not just one-time bumps. They're going into pensions followed, as soon as a pension justification letter goes in, just so everybody knows.
Mayor.
So my, my motion stands, and I'll move the question.
You're not going to let me, not going to allow me to respond to that?
No, I'm moving the question.
All right, so as Mayor, I'm not going to be allowed to respond to that question. Okay, thank you.
Okay, the question's moved. Roll call.
Counselor Turco.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
No.
Gamash.
No.
McGinn.
No.
Motion fails, 3 to 2.
Counselor Manning Martin.
Uh, on the motion? There was, that was a motion to move the question, right?
No, we, that was the motion, that was... Yep, that was the roll call on the motion. I verified with the clerk. We moved the question. And I, that's how, that was the preface that I put on it when it was taken. No, not voted. Counsel, Counselor Manning Martin, you still have the floor.
So that vote, through you to the city clerk. There was a motion to move the question. Was that vote not on the motion to move the question?
There is no roll call on a motion to move the question. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, I'd like a motion to reconsider my motion to remove the business liaison's position from the operating budget. I think, I was confused on that. I think Counselor Turco was as well, maybe others were. But I'm going to make a motion to reconsider removing that uh business liaison's position.
Counselors, you heard Counselor Manning Martin's motion for reconsideration on the motion. Seeing none, roll call.
To clarify, this, this is the roll call to decide whether to reconsider. It is not the reconsideration. Counselor Turco.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamash.
No.
McGinn.
No.
Motion carries to reconsider, 3 to 2.
On the motion?
On the motion. Counselor Manning Martin.
I'd like to propose the motion again for a roll call. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the, this is just for clarity for the committee. This is a, um, the mo, the, the original motion is under reconsideration, um, and that is a motion to remove the enterprise fund manager from the ordinance language. Biz, I'm sorry. Business liaison. Thank you for that correction.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I might, under Robert's rules of order, a person on the opposite side of what the motion, uh, the hopeful motion to be made cannot be made by somebody who voted on the minority side. It must be voted on and a, and a motion made by a person on the majority side. Counselor Manning Martin, under Robert's rules of order, is not allowed to make that motion. It must be the Counselor Gould, Counselor Gamash, or yourself. An illegal vote, a, a motion that was brought illegally by the person.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor. I, I do have the authority to rule on points of order, and, you know, I'm going to let this uh vote proceed. So, roll call vote.
This is on the motion to remove the business liaison. Counselor Turco.
Yes.
Manning Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
No.
Gamash.
No.
McGinn.
No.
Motion fails, 3 to 2.
Counselor Manning Martin, you still have the floor.
That is all I have. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Manning Martin. Other counselors. Counselor Melville.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mike, or Mr. Mayor, or Beth, a lot of what you discussed was about retention and competition. Do you guys, is there a percentage of what you can see as somebody's benefits and salary cost based off of either a retirement or somebody leaving that position that would impact ultimately? I know you were talking about having to increase for uh benef, increase the salary uh for attracting other uh folks to fill those positions in case somebody retired uh or moved on to another community. Is there any sort of metrics you have for that? I'll take it from either the Human Resources Director or the Mayor, or Mike.
Counselor, so I've been doing a lot of work with my colleagues in the MMA, and um we regularly review salary surveys and work together to try to figure out how we're all together going to address this crisis in hiring. One of the things that traditionally happened, and I can't say that it doesn't happen here, but we do work towards the goal of trying to recruit people from outside public service, to bring them into public service. Because in the current environment, it really doesn't assist any of us um regionally to be continually stealing employees from um other municipalities, because then it just puts the municipality next door in um as bad a shape as we just left. So statistically, there's national literature suggesting that it costs about a, a year's salary um to bring a new person in to an unfilled role. I think that's probably more so in the private sector, because in the, in the um public sector, as you know, what happens is we aren't usually able to stop doing all the things that we're doing, so the, it, the tasks just sort of get more spread out. So I think it's more of a toll on employees here, what we're seeing, is that when positions aren't filled as quickly as we'd like them to be because we don't have as many qualified applicants in some of those roles, the cost is monetary, and there is literature to that effect. But I think it's also a real toll on the employees. So that's a part that I can speak to, if that answers your question in part.
Yes, I mean, it's kind of going to what we're talking about tonight. Um, you know, there's a, if you go down Route 1, there's, you'll see the MBTA is offering $10,000, $7,500 signing bonuses. What you're seeing is a marketplace for hiring in which the public sector is competing, various public sector entities are competing against each other. I can tell you that NAGE, which is the State Employee Union, uh, settled for 4% raises starting Ju, July 4th, and then January 1st. So that's actually going to be a 8% in percentage, but it really adds up to more like 9%. So I would just put that out there, is that's, you know, who municipalities are competing against. They're not just competing against other municipalities, they're competing against the state. I've recruited people from municipalities with state benefits and state pay. There are certain skill sets that are in demand. I think one thing that, you know, I'm sure Mike can attest to, dealing with what he does, uh, that the training and the software, I'm sure Counselor Dagel knew his treasure when she, in her previous position, but the software that municipal employees are using is very specific to their job, which makes them in more high demand. Um, and, you know, I, I'm more worried about the retention side, frankly. Um, early retire, folks that retire, you know, that, that, that's something that, you know, uh, if we get a group of retirements at one time, can have strain on the pension system that was discussed earlier. Uh, so I think all of those add up to, that's really somewhere where I see some, some stress on the system. And I, and I deal with every municipality in the Commonwealth, and it's everywhere. And I know, as the Human Resources Director pointed out, that the MMA is working strategically with communities to ensure that they're not picking off each other's folks, arbitrarily driving up uh salaries. And, and lastly, the point I would make is I know there's some other communities, some of the more um, like the Cape Cod and the Islands, they're actually offering, you know, staff uh to work remotely in a hybrid model. So you're actually being able to recruit at a, at a hi, at a, at a, at a longer range. And if you go to the MMA website, you'll see Southern New Hampshire and Rhode Island are, municipalities are, are offering positions there. So this is a really unique situation. I think it's a unique marketplace right now. And some of what we discussed tonight, I think, is a way to address that. Um, you know, I, I do leave it up to the managers and the mayor and the Human Resources Director to put in place uh, you know, their, their um rev, annual reviews. And, and a lot of what we're talking about tonight is the maximum for those ordinance positions. I know not everybody is at that maximum, but it gives you some leeway to use that for um to enhance people's performance or to reward good performance. So um, those are just my thoughts. It's, this is a unique time. It's one of the rare times that the employee has the edge over the marketplace. And I think sometimes folks don't, you know, it's not, it's not a common thing when you see uh you know, hundreds of jobs available on the state website and in various municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. So I appreciate the time. I appreciate the information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Melville. Any other counselors? Seeing none, what is the will of the committee? Counselor Gamash.
Yes, um, if I may, um, I would move approval on the ordinance amending Section 18 dash 20 entitled Schedule of Compensation for Part-Time Positions and Section 18 dash 21 entitled Rates of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining. Be it ordained by the City Council, the City of Peabody as follows. Section 1, the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan is hereby amended as follows. The code of the City of Peabody as adopted on January 23rd, 1969, and amended is hereby further amended by deleting from Section 18 dash 20 and 18 dash 21 the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan and substituting therefore the following. Section A, Section 18 dash 20 entitled Schedule of Compensation for Part-Time Positions is hereby amended by substitution of upper limit of annual compensation as follows for FY '23 and F, through FY '25. Do you want me to list all those, or just as, as submitted?
As, uh, in accordance with the schedule submitted in the um attachment to Communication from His Honor of the Mayor dated May 17th, 2023. And if he could continue on from Section B.
Section B, Section 18 dash 21 entitled Schedule of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subjected to Collective Bargaining is hereby amended by substitution of the upper limit of annual compensation as follows for FY '23 through FY '25. As further stated, um, based upon the submission of the the submission of this document dated, what was it, May 17?
Correct.
As submitted by, on May 17th, so moved. Do you want me to go through the next part, too?
No, I just, if you need to make the exception of the enterprise fund manager in that schedule, because we're...
With the exception of the enterprise fund manager, which was voted on to be, to be done away with, so moved.
Yep, and if you could just, Section 2?
Section 2, all ordinances, parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as of the first pay date in July 2023, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Counsel Gamache on the motion. Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Turco?
No.
Manning Martin?
No.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Motion carries, three to two.
Mr. Gingrich.
Thank you, councilors. This next section addresses the part-time ordinance. We haven't been back since 2017, and during that time, the state has raised the minimum wage up to $15 an hour. What we're trying to do here is to create a floor and a ceiling so that whenever the minimum wage changes, that becomes the floor. We have a $15 range to add to different levels in order to attract people with different skill sets, people that have been here with us for a while and/or for positions that just the market requires a higher wage. So that's what you have before you.
Thank you, Mr. Gingrich. Questions from the committee? Counselor Turco?
Again, I don't have issue with paying people minimum wage as we should. What I have issue with is, I'm looking at, you know, museum staff. We haven't even had these positions in the budget for a year, for a full year, but we're going minimum wage plus three, but meanwhile, we just went through a contract negotiation with paraprofessionals that we wound up at $1,865 an hour for somebody in year six. But I'm sorry, year seven, but you want to pay the museum people that just got hired eight months ago $18 an hour? I, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me. We're treating this as though this is CBA. This is, these aren't collective bargaining agreements. We could talk about NAGE, we could talk about any other union you want to talk about. These are people that pay into, the union dues, pay for representation, but we want to treat, you know, those that, that aren't the same. It's just, you know, that's terrible, that museum staff $18. Mayor, you know, I realize you're probably offended. I'm offended, too, so, you know, $1,865, year seven.
You were not part of that negotiation. That is not accurate statement.
No, I certainly was part of that negotiation.
No, you were not part of that negotiation.
I certainly was part of that negotiation.
That was not the terms of the deal. That was not the terms of the deal.
Okay. Well, let me tell you. I see the paycheck when it comes home every week, so I know what she makes. She makes $18.65.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Turco, we're not going to talk over each other. Just a minute recess. Two-minute recess.
Please, but that's what's important. Let's play the museum people, but screw everybody else. Yeah, I represent everybody in this city. Please don't call me otherwise.
Counselor Turco?
You want to throw it to everybody else?
Two-minute recess.
But screw the CBAs. No, it's not happening.
We're in recess. Councilors, we're just waiting for PAT. Back in session. Counselor Turco, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, let me just, I apologize to you, I would apologize to the mayor. It was an issue that was, you know, pretty important and personal to me. So with that being said, those are my concerns, is that the, I understand some of these positions that have been on there for a long period of time, you know, and actually, I may even say that some of these positions deserve more than minimum wage, but my, my main issue is that we have new positions that were just added less than eight months ago that were, they're already higher than all of these other positions. So with that, I'll give it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Turco. Other committee, Counsel Manning Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding the children's museum, I know when it was first raised, it was a lot, I believe it got a lot of council support, but it was strongly encouraged by a majority of the council, if my memory serves me correctly, that it didn't belong in the budget and that we should be working towards it becoming a private nonprofit and get it out of our budget. And I'm wondering if I could ask the museum director, has there been any progress to that end? And do you have a business plan, you know, moving in that direction? And how is it going?
Ms. Haydock?
Hi, councilors. This is Ally Haydock. I'm the director at the museum. Thank you for your time and your support you've had of the museum so far. So we're at about eight months so far. We actually hit 20,000 tickets sold today. We've raised 360,000 this year, so we'll easily eclipse our budget of 380,000 that you gave us last year. So as far as the long-term plan, we've formed a board. We've had a couple meetings. We have a finance committee with a really strong group of folks on it who are working on a, a long-term forecast, taking into account what we're getting in kind through the city. So being part of the city, we get much more than the 380,000 or whatever is approved for the operating budget. We're getting IT support, HR, all of that, so we're working with Mike Gingrich to calculate exactly what we would need to be our own nonprofit and stay open. We're looking at projections for next year with the addition of the two employees, and it's, it's really not an addition, it's an increase from two part-time employees to full-time. They, I'm projecting will be well over 600,000 in revenue next year. So we're very actively looking at how we'll peel away from the city. It's going to take probably three to five years. We need to have a solid nest egg and a foundation in order to do that and ensure we can stay open. And I think growth at this stage is necessary in order for us to do that. So having, having the capacity to fundraise in my job means needing more support in other assets of my, of the museum right now. We have one other full-time staff, and most museums our size have about 20 to 50 employees. We've filed to create the Friends of the North Shore Children's Museum, so we have the EIN number for that. We're working with Liz, Liz Lashway, the Assistant City Solicitor, to get that fully up and running, hoping by July, we'll have that foundation set up and that will run kind of parallel to how, to the museum as a department, similar to how the Council on Aging runs the Friends, similar to how the library has the Friends, and that will allow us to fundraise even more and apply for more grants. But so far, we've raised 108,000, really not having much time to do that.
Well, thank you for that update, and I hear nothing but rave reviews about everything involved at the children's museum, everything that you're doing there, the technical and computer skills and, I, everyone's raving about it, so it will be the success. So I think the mayor's vision and your work and your staff's work, I think you're cutting yourself a little short, because it is such a great program, and there are so many, and you're the fundraiser, I know that, but there are so many nonprofit organizations that are chomping at the bit to write big checks for children's museum. The mayor was right, there isn't one on the North Shore. He was right, it's an opportunity. But I do think, and I know you have two board members that are councilors that are here this evening, I do think that you need to focus and expedite on getting that nonprofit status, because it doesn't, I firmly believe it's not something that we should have in the budget and that it's going to be sustainable. I know you're going to be busy and successful, but I also know there are people that have million, tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars that donate annually to projects like this, and they're just chomping at the bit. So we just have to prepare ourselves to be able to receive that. So I just want to encourage you to, and the councilors and the board of the children's museum, to really, really make that a priority, to make that happen. So good luck with everything. Again, I'm hearing nothing but rave reviews, and thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Manning Martin. Other committee members? Other councilors? Seeing none, Counsel Gamache?
Yes, at this time, I move approval, be it ordained by the City Council of the city of Peabody as follows. Section 1, the section, excuse me, that's Section 18-28 entitled Schedule of Compensation of Hourly Rated Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining of the Classification and Compensation Plan of the City of Peabody, Massachusetts, be amended by inserting in place thereof. Hourly rated positions not subject to collective bargaining will have a minimum rate equal to the current Massachusetts minimum wage with the option of adding up to 10 levels at 50 cents per level, then another $1 from 10 more levels to the current minimum wage rate. The maximum amount that can be added to minimum wage is $15, and the positions are listed as on this dated May 17. And Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall be effective upon the passage and shall take effect as provided by law, so moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Counsel Gamache on the motion. Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
No.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Motion carries, four to one.
Mr. Gingrich.
This next ordinance addresses the benefit portion of ordinance positions, and what we're trying to do here is to create some consistency between ordinance people and the people they work with in terms of longevity and some holidays and personal days. And in addition to that, we have a little bit of cleanup where we've gone to a public, Peabody Public Employee Committee agreement, and we're just putting that in to codify that as the document we're working from for health insurance and health and other related benefit plans.
Questions from the committee. Counselor Turco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did speak to Mr. Gingrich earlier today. You know, one thing that, and clerk Danforth, one thing that, you know, through trying to find these documents online, none of these, for some reason, are listed in our city code, which, you know, 1843 is not listed anywhere, so I couldn't go back and actually look at what was previously covered and what, you know, the previous longevity pay was as opposed to now. So I guess my first question is, why is that not in city ordinance, Mike, either the pay scales, yeah, city ordinance? Why is none of that listed online?
As far as I know, a lot of these revert back to that 1969 coding sequences, and it's probably something that should be done to clean this up, maybe as part of the charter review and code amendments to move these into the current code.
Right, I agree, and, you know, Counsel McGinn was nice enough to forward me an email that Counsel Manning had sent over a year ago, kind of notifying of the same thing, that, that she couldn't find this information online, and it's, it's not even in our, in our black books and in the desks. So, you know, just for us to reference back, I mean, obviously, I could have gone back, meeting by meeting, and found this information, but it would be nicer just to have it there. I think it's public information anyway, so, you know, if we could, through you, to Mr. Gingrich and the clerk, if we could find a way to add this to the code of ordinances, and I know, Allison, you need to be supplied that information to get it in there, I think. Forgive me if I'm wrong, but, you know, Mike, if you could supply that to Allison for the, for the future. I don't think we need that in the form of a motion. You know what, I'll make it in the form of a motion, just to make sure it gets done. So moved.
Just to clarify, that motion is to get the salary ordinances incorporated to the, for online access? Is that correct?
Correct. Salary ordinances and fringe benefits.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Counsel Turco on the motion. Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And the reason I reached out to Mike about this was because I don't know the cost of it. And the reason I reached out to Mike about this was because I don't know the cost of it and I didn't know the cost of it. And, you know, so we're deleting longevity and we're adding, again, collectively bargained things that we want to give to ordinance employees and so be it. You know, equality and fairness, I get. But we want to add longevity, holidays, personal days, funeral and civic duty leave. So I didn't know what currently ordinance employees have and what additions this would be and what the long-term cost of the city. I think Mr. Gingrich gave me a rough estimate, back of the napkin, of about $40,000 a year. I just wanted to make that known to the rest of this committee that, forgive me, Mike, I'll let you answer that questions that I asked you. Maybe you came up with better numbers since we spoke. But I think that was what you said, 40,000 per year?
I said, depending on the gap that changed, but anywhere between 21 and 40,000 for the longevity piece. And I think in total, maybe 60, you know, with the extra day and everything.
Thank you. So that was just for edification of the council, that there is, there is a cost to it. I do support the equality of it and I will support it. Again, I just wanted to bring up the numbers for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Turco. Questions from other councilors? Seeing none. Councilor Gamache?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. An ordinance amending, I move approval that an ordinance amending the ordinance established fringe benefits for municipal employees of the City of Peabody, excluding fire, police, electrical and school personnel of the code of the City of Peabody, section 18-43, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Peabody as follows. Section one, that the ordinance establishing fringe benefits for municipal employees of the City of Peabody, including, excluding, fire, police, electrical, school personnel and any other employees covered by collective bargaining, be amended as follows. A, by deleting the title of said ordinance and inserting in place thereof the following: An ordinance establishing fringe benefits for municipal employees not covered by collective bargaining of the City of Peabody. Section B, by deleting from subsection A of section four entitled Longevity, the amounts awarded for various periods for full-time continuous service and inserting in place thereof. Longevity, holidays, personal days, funeral and civic duty leave shall be equal to benefits received by employees covered under the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO, State Council Number 93, Local Number 364. C, by deleting section 13, Medical Insurance, and inserting the place thereof the following: Effective July 1, 2019, the City of Peabody shall follow the Peabody Public Employee Committee, PPEC, Agreement for Contribution to Employee Health Plans and Related Benefits. Section two, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage of the ordinance provided by law. So moved.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Councilor Gamache on the motion. Seeing none, roll call.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item on the agenda, item B, transfer of fund, cable fund expense in an amount of $215,212.94. Mr. Gingras.
Thank you. This is the cable transfer for Comcast for the first quarter of 2023 to pay the fees over to Peabody Access Television for $215,212.94.
Questions from the committee or other councilors? Councilor Gould.
I'm ready to make a motion when you move forward on that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please, Councilor.
Thank you. I make a motion to transfer from Receipts Reserve Cable Fund Account Number 270000033017 in the amount of $215,212.94 to Cable Fund Expense Account Number 27000053007, again in the amount of $215,212.94. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Councilors, you heard the motion from Councilor Gould on the motion. Seeing none, roll call.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Manning-Martin.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Gamache. McGinn.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
It's time to accept the motion adjourned. Councilors, we are adjourned.[913.73]
We are waiting for Councilor Dagel and Councilor O'Neal. Good evening and welcome to PBD City Council Meeting of Thursday, June 8th, for the purpose of discussing any and all business via in-person and remote participation in accordance with Chapter 48 of the Massachusetts General Laws, being televised live by PBD Access Television and recorded by the city council's geographer. Please join me for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. You heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. First up, for hearings, we have 4A, a zoning amendment.
Madam President.
Okay. We need, with Councilor Gould.
If I may?
Sure. You need a minute, Councilor Gould? We will hear a report of committee from Councilor Gould for industrial and community development, which took place earlier today.
Apologies, Madam President.
Take your time, Councilor.
Thank you. I'm good. So, we had a very informative meeting this evening, attended by Councilors Dagel, Manny Martin, McGinn, Rozignol. Also in attendance was Councilor Turco, Councilor O'Neill, Councilor Peach, Councilor Gamache, and Councilor Melville. We heard from Community Development Director, Mr. Bellevance, and from Community Development Planner Drew Levin. Mr. Levin pointed out that the fee tables have probably not been to our benefit or fair, I should say, and much discussion was put into change of the zoning amendment, and I'll read that if I may, Madam President. Oh, move to receive item 8G.
Motion to receive, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you. So, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD as follows: That the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD entitled "Zoning Ordinance 2011" is amended through April 27, 2023, is hereby further amended as follows: Section 1, by amending Section 12.5 entitled "An Application and Site Plan Contents" to delete the language in Subparagraph A, quote, "an application fee in the amount of $100," end of quote, and inserting in place thereof, quote, "an application fee as referred to in Section 12.18 Fee Schedule." Section 2, by creating a new Section 12.18 entitled "Fee Schedule" as follows: An administrative fee for site plan review is required with every site plan review application. The fee is $500. For each site plan application plus $50 per 1,000 square feet of proposed new building footprint over 5,000 square feet; in no case shall application fee exceed $10,000. Section 3, as ordinance, all ordinances of part of ordinances inconsistent hereof are hereby repealed. In Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. So moved, Madam Chair, Madam President, excuse me.
Thank you, Councilor Gould. We'll have Mr. Levin, would you like to come up and briefly comment on your recommendation, briefly? May I hear a motion to receive his recommendation? Councilor Gamache, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Do you have anything to add from your presentation earlier?
Councilor Gould did a great job summarizing.
You're doing great tonight. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the change? Anyone in favor? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition? Is there anyone in the audience in opposition? Anyone on Zoom? Nobody is on Zoom. On the motion. Motion to close the public hearing, Councilor Gamache. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. On the motion, roll call. Councilor's Turco?
Yes.
Dagel?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Gamache?
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilor Gamache.
And could I ask for, under suspension of the rules, that we go to item 7D, the appointment of Thomas St. Pierre as Inspector of Buildings and Building Commissioner? He's in the audience, this might be a while, and I'd really like to get him on his way. If there's no objection?
No, there's no objection. Just for reminder for folks that Section 16 of Council Rules, we have been kind of ignoring it as of late. I have no objection tonight, but I just want to remind people that nominations are supposed to be voted on the meeting after it's been received. But I don't have any objection, I just want to remind new councilors that they might want to check out Section 16 of the Council Rules.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to receive.
Motion to receive, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today and hope everybody's doing well. Very, very happy to bring forward this appointment request for Tom St. Pierre to be our Building Commissioner. Tom has been helping us out over the last few months. He helped us out several years ago during interim period. He was not the day here, day to day over the last few months. He would come in on Wednesdays, assist Dan Terranzoni and the team, doing some work, signing some documents, giving some advice. But now to be able to bring him onboard, I think is excellent for our city. He comes with a wealth of knowledge and knows PBD, lives in PBD, and I know that the staff downstairs is very happy and excited to have Tom being presented tonight for approval. I asked him to put together a little resume. He's been at the same job for 25 years, so the resume is really focused on that. For the past 25 years, he's been with the Salem, City of Salem Building Office, the last 20-plus years being the Building Commissioner. His licenses, Class B licenses, Massachusetts Construction Supervisor, Massachusetts Hoisting License 2A certification as a Building Commissioner, and as I mentioned, he brings a wealth of knowledge to the area, the North Shore. He served for 14 years on the Essex Tech School Project, which has been an important part of work that is taking place in the city over the last number of years. And again, he's taken right to our staff and he's been very much involved, particularly recently, in a number of big topics. He's going to be jumping right into a number of important issues in building projects that we need assistance from, and are very happy to present him today. I did want to thank Dan Terranzoni for stepping up over the past several months, doing and running a number of the day-to-day operations and working with staff that have had some increased pressure with the vacancy. And I wanted to thank all of the members of the Building Commissioners Office for their hard work. I wanted to mention Kelly and Carla for stepping up in a variety of ways, and all of our inspectors. Tom's already been a part of our team, and again, very happy with his familiarity with the city and a number of the projects we already are in place. He's here today, certainly willing to come up and say a few words or answer any questions, and looking forward to working with him in the future. Madam Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, welcome. If you'd like to introduce yourself.
My name's Thomas St. Pierre. I am a PBD and Salem resident. My house is one of those right on the line, so we can pick either city. Really looking forward to working with the group that's downstairs. I may have put together a nice group, leaving a good group in Salem and inheriting a good group here, so looking forward to it.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion, can I hear a motion to approve and receive 7D, Councilor Gould?
Yes, motion to approve, to, under suspension of rules, receive 7D, and approve the appointment of Thomas St. Pierre as Inspector of Buildings and Building Commissioner. So moved.
Thank you, Councilor. On the motion, roll call. Roll call on the motion? Councilor's Turco?
Yes.
Dagel?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0.
I just thank the Council for taking it out of order. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
We are going to hit the restart button. My apologies. That subcommittee meeting, the committee meeting on finance went about an hour over, so in my haste to pick things up, I made an error. So, we need the clerk to read the notice for the ordinance change into record and then revote on it, and forgive me.
Notice hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 8, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 48, Section 5 of the Massachusetts General Laws, to consider amending the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD as follows: Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD as follows: That the zoning ordinance of the City of PBD entitled "Zoning Ordinance 2011" as amended through April 27, 2023, is hereby further amended as follows: Section 1, by amending Section 12.5 entitled "Application and Site Plan Contents" to delete the language in Subparagraph A, "an application fee in the amount of $100," and inserting in place thereof, "an application fee as referred to in Section 12.18 Fee Schedule." Section 2, by creating a new Section 12.18 entitled "Fee Schedule" as follows: An administrative fee for site plan review is required with every site plan review application. The fee is $500 for each site plan application plus $50 per 1,000 square feet of proposed new building envelope over 5,000 square feet; in no case shall application fee exceed $10,000. Fee schedule table: Proposed building envelope square footage from 5,001 to 6,000 square feet, $500 plus $50. From 6,001 feet to 7,000 square feet, $500 plus $100. 7,001 feet to 8,000 square feet, $500 plus $150, et cetera, $500. Section 3, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 4, this ordinance shall take effect as provided by law. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's Office. PBD City Council, Councilor Craig S. Welton, City Council President.
Motion to close the public hearing again by Councilor Gould.
Moved.
What? Is there anyone in favor now? Anyone to speak in favor? Is there anyone here now to speak against? Anyone against? Being none? And no one on Zoom? Motion, close the public hearing. Councilor Gould, thank you. Roll call on the motion. Motion approved by Councilor Gould, as read earlier. Roll call.
On the motion, we're voting on the version that was read by the chairman, right, not what the clerk just read, because the clerk's reading did not include the edits that were made in committee. I just want to make sure we're voting the right version.
Councilor Gould's read version. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Councilor's Turco?
Yes.
Dagel?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Gamache?
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0. Moving right along, 4B, special permit, Kelsey Beard, 672 Lowell Street, Unit 3, to operate a hair salon. Is the petitioner available? Hello? How are you? Why don't you step up to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what you'd like to do? Boy, I'm really off my game tonight. Will the clerk please read the notice?
Notice hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD, acting as the special permit granting authority, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 8, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., and remotely via Zoom, on the application from Kelsey Beard, 4 Merriam Street, Wakefield, Mass., for a special permit requesting to operate a hair salon at 672 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Sections 4.2.5, 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's Office. PBD City Council, Councilor Craig S. Welton, City Council President.
Hello again. Would you please state your name and address and tell us what you'd like to do?
Hello, yes. So, my name is Kelsey Beard. My address is 4 Merriam Street, Wakefield, Mass. I am requesting to operate a salon at 672 Lowell Street. I will be taking over an existing salon already, so I won't be putting in a new one or changing anything. We're just going to keep everything the same and just change ownership of the salon itself.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone in the audience to speak in favor of the petitioner? Anyone in favor? Is there anyone opposed in the audience? Opposed? Zoom? None? None on Zoom? Being none, Councilor O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kelsey, the applicant, explained it really simply in her note that she put in the package with the application. It's been a hair salon for many, many years. Most recently changed over in 2018. It's a six-chair salon. Kelsey's plan is to, you know, be the only stylist, if that's the right word, take care of one chair and certainly try to grow the business. For those that are unfamiliar with it, there's lots of small businesses in that convenience store, ice cream shop, sandwich and sub shop, Dunkin' Donuts. There's about 35, you know, parking spaces. I don't see parking being an issue in this particular area, so I'm in full support of this. Just so other councils know, the only condition that I would be adding is that the hours of operations would be Monday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM, which I've discussed that with the applicant, and she's agreeable to that. So, I don't have any issues with this. I'm in full support, and I guess I'll open up to my fellow councils for any questions or comments at this time.
Thank you, Councilor O'Neill. Counselors, any comments, questions? Councilor Gamache?
Yes, through you to Councilor O'Neill, the petitioner. I know a lot of salons, they sometimes they'll do weddings and stuff like that. If you have a Sunday wedding, you're not going to be able to do anything. I mean, Councilor O'Neill may want to give her a few hours on Sunday if that's okay with him. Just to give, you don't have to open, but you can have the ability of doing some of the updo's and all that stuff, so just to throw it out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Through the chair to Councilor Gamache, that's certainly an option. I'm going with the hours that are requested if the applicant wants to have Sunday. Is that something you'd want to have just as a possibility?
Actually, that's a great point, but, so, most of the time, our weddings are onsite, but there could be a case that someone would want to come in, maybe, you know, a few hours on a Sunday morning for a wedding, so maybe that would be, but it wouldn't be a regular, you know, always open every Sunday type of thing, so I'm not really sure what you'd want to do with that.
Great, thank you. No, I guess just for, as we're looking into approving this, it would make sense to make Sunday hours so that they're available if, in fact, you need to do that, if that's okay. You may not choose to use it, but to Councilor Gamache's point, if an opportunity comes up, you would not be able to open if we went just so. I guess, okay, so thank you, Councilor Gamache, for that. I had no idea about Sunday, I didn't even think about weddings, but, you know, what do I know? So, Monday through Sunday would be the hours, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Once again, thank you, and we'll open up to fellow councils.
I'm very impressed, Councilor Gamache. Updo's?
My, I don't know if that's what's called. I never had one, as you can see, but my wife owns a salon, so I know that sometimes they have off hours, so.
That was a very good catch and a great suggestion. Are you, any other comments or ready to close the public hearing, Councilor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to close the public hearing.
Thank you, Councilor O'Neill. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. On the motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I'd move to approve the special permit on the application from Kelsey Beard, 4 Merriam Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts, for a special permit requesting to operate a hair salon at 672 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., as filed in accordance with Section 4.2.5, comma 6.1, and 15.7 of the PBD zoning ordinance, with hours of operations Monday through Sunday, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So moved.
On the motion, any further comments? Being none, roll call on the motion. Councilor's Turco?
Yes.
Dagel?
Yes.
O'Neill?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Gamache?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Manny Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries 10 to 0. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Moving right along to 4C, show cause hearing, Albanian Boston Community, Inc., 26 Holly Street, regarding reported violation to special permit condition. Would the clerk read the notice?
Notice hereby given that the City Council of the City of PBD will conduct a public hearing on Thursday evening, June 8, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the Frank Elwigan Auditorium, City Hall, 24 Lowell Street, PBD, Mass., and remotely via Zoom, for the purpose of hearing testimony to determine whether or not the fine of $200 and sanctions imposed by the City Council as a result of a show cause hearing held on February 23, 2023, have been met regarding a violation of special permit 2-22, condition number one, as issued to the Albanian Boston Community, Inc., 26 Holly Street, PBD, Mass., specifically that the Inspector of Buildings has issued a cease and desist order dated December 28, 2022, stating that alcohol is being sold and consumed on the premises at said 26 Holly Street. Said action could include the suspension or revocation of said special permit or issuance of a penalty under Section 15.5 of the PBD zoning ordinance. For remote participation using the Zoom platform, please visit www.pbd-ma.gov under calendar on the homepage or contact the City Clerk's Office. PBD City Council, Councilor Craig S. Welton, City Council President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Councilor Melville?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be recusing myself from this particular item, as I did the original, as the hearing was the result of a report by the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, and to ensure that it's not a conflict between my position as a city councillor and as Deputy Executive Director with the ABCC, I'll be recusing myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Melville. Would the petitioner introduce himself and state your name and address into the record, please?
Thank you, Madam President, John Kelty, for the petitioner, Albanian Boston Community, Inc. This has been advertised as a show cause hearing. It seems to me that, at first, when I saw it, I thought we were being charged with violations again. The club has been closed. We did appeal the earlier decision of the board without success, so the club did close. It's been closed now for over two months. I believe our sentence will be up, for lack of a better word, on the 40 I believe our sentence will be up, for lack of a better word, on the 14th of June, at which time we would reopen the club. It is our intention to, we have already changed our Board of Directors. We were originally, Ardi Bakova was the sole member of the corporation, the Albanian Boston Community, Inc. Since we were brought to the council, brought before the council, we have changed the membership of the corporation, the corporation adding Zenal Lala, Aleko Pasha, Arthur Bakova, and Clevis Yee, Queesi? Anyway, I don't know if in Albanian there is a Q, but it looks like Queesi. In any event, I'd be happy to share the new membership with the council. It is our intention, as I stated earlier, to remain closed until the appropriate date, which I once again believe is the 14th of June, at which time we'll open, offer our cultural opportunities and the opportunity to gather. However, there is a prohibition against alcohol. We understand that we must live by that rule, and as such, we will do so, and it's our intention to operate under the special permit in accordance with the special permit, and as our membership grows, see what the desires of our new members are with respect to the future at this location and the future of the club serving as it does right now. So I'm happy to answer questions. The newer members are here this evening, although they are not planning on speaking, and I know that Counselor Khan is here. Oh, with respect to the fine, I know that's been paid because I actually paid that myself.
Thank you. I am going to ask Counselor Khan to join us, since this is a, posted as a show cause hearing, and I'm also going to open it up as it is a public hearing to, to the public. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition to the matter? Is anyone in opposition? Anyone on Zoom? Nobody on Zoom? I'd like to defer now to Counselor Peach.
Thank you, Madam President. We, I think we're, we all remember the show cause and the, you know, what ultimately came of that, and that three-month suspension that was voted on by this council is coming to a close. I have talked to one of the board members, what they have done, and Attorney Kelty, if you can speak in more detail to this, they have added additional people to their board, and I believe there, one of my main suggestions before was that a board member needs to be present at the club for any other members to be present at the club, not just kind of like a, if you have the code, you can go type thing. So Attorney Kelty, can you speak more to the plan that we did request as a council at the original hearing?
Yes, we've added people that have experience in the restaurant business, only because they are people that have experience here in the business community. We will be adding, everything was done on a full-time basis. When we are reopened on the 14th, it'll be our plan to have people on the premises that are full-time employees or experienced members of our club corporation to be able to be accountable, manage the activities of the club while it's open. So we've added, full-time employees are adding, actually, since there's no payroll right now, but beginning the 14th, there will be full and part-time employees, and the corporation has the benefit of some experienced business people who have been engaged in business here in Peabody.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Attorney Kelty. I am, as the Ward 3 Councilor, I'm satisfied with the plan that's been put forth. I think the club has made an effort. They have recruited some very notable business people in our community that are involved in their club now. I think it's been made very clear what the rules are. I wish the club well. I look forward to the success that you can bring to the community in Ward 3 and downtown Peabody, as the Albanian community continues to grow on the North Shore. I understand that there is a desire from the club at some point to grow into a club that can have alcohol and alcohol sales, such as other social clubs in the area. It's my opinion that this is not the correct location for something like that. It's not a standalone building, and I think the size of the club is not something that can accommodate something like that. So at this time, I'm not in favor of amending the special permit in any way, and I just want to reiterate that there's no sale of alcohol or alcohol allowed on the premises, and someone from the board needs to be present in order for other members to be in the club. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peach. Any other counselors? Counselor Gould?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very impressed to see Aleko on the board. That was a wonderful addition. Good luck, Aleko, and Attorney Kelty. Attorney Kelty, can you just reaffirm with your clients that there is no alcohol, there will be no alcohol, until they come before the city's alcohol licensing board, and they understand there'll be no alcohol? Can you please repeat that for us?
Sure, I'd be happy to, and we've been over this evening, as well as at a couple of meetings we had during this 90-day period. And we also understand, it's not a simple matter of applying for a license at the licensing board, but also coming back before the council in order to remove that restriction. So it's a two-step process in order to get there.
Thank you. Through you, Madam President. Gentlemen, I wish you well. If we can be of any help to help you grow your cultural center, please let us know. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Kelty.
Thank you, Counselor Gould. Any other counselors? Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Counselor Peach. At the show cause hearing, the second condition, you know, is basically what, why we're having this meeting, right? And I'm just going to read it for clarity. Before reinstatement of the special permit, the license holder must appear before the City Council with a business plan, which includes the board members' names, addresses, the names and addresses of the responsible parties, and a plan to mitigate compliance with condition number one, no alcohol to be sold or consumed on the premises. We're going to have the record of what Attorney Kelty gave us in terms of the board members. I just, I'd feel a little more comfortable if we had all that in writing. I mean, we'll have, we'll certainly have the council record, but I, are you satisfied with accepting this in a verbal form, or would it make more sense just to get them to memorialize this, so we have something concrete to refer back to?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor McGinn. I would agree that, you know, it was requested that this is submitted in writing so that we have a copy of it, so I don't think it requires having another hearing, but if, Attorney Kelty, if you could submit that to the city clerk so we can receive it and have a copy of it, just, I know nothing else is going to happen, but just in case, we know who to call. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other counselors? Counselor McGinn?
Thank you. Yeah, through you again to Counselor Peach. I thank you for doing that. I think that's the right approach, and now I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Counselor Peach.
Any other remarks before I ask Attorney Khan to make a recommendation how we wrap up this show cause hearing? Not until I close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing, Counselor Gould? So moved. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Attorney Khan?
Thank you, Madam President. The issue before you tonight is whether there's been compliance with paragraph 2 of your subsequent vote. I think that the council is well within their rights to ask that a written submission be made, summarizing what Attorney Kelty has said. I would suggest, if the council is satisfied that the conditions have been settled, that you could take a vote to require prior to this expiration of the suspension that the written submission be filed with the city clerk.
Counselor Peach?
So moved, Madam President.
You heard the motion? Roll call on the motion. Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Melville.
He's recused.
Oh, I'm sorry. McGinn.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries nine to zero.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you, Attorney Kelty. Next, we have 4D, special permit for 55 Pulaski Street, which I believe is going to be continued. Counselor Peach?
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, motion to receive.
I brought that letter today.
Yes. Motion to receive late 2, 3, and 4. 4 is a request to continue this until June 22nd, so I make that motion. So moved. 22nd.
22nd?
That's our next meeting, right?
Okay.
Got it?
All right. On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Moving on to 4E, special permit A&amp;P Gorges LLC on 100 Bernie Street. I believe that's continued, too. Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Suspension of the rules, move to receive late communication 1. So moved.
On the motion, all in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Late 1 is a communication from the attorney, and they are requesting a continuance to the June 22nd meeting, and I would move to grant that continuance. So moved.
You heard the motion. On the motion, any remarks? None? All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Moving on to 8, no, not 8, 4F, special permit 180 Newbury Street.
Madam President?
Counselor Gamash?
Yes, if I may, under suspension of rules, receive items 8D and 8F, and these are requests to continue, to continue the special permit to the, I'm sorry.
The D and E.
D and E, I'm sorry. And continue that to, I believe, the 13th. Is that correct? The 13th of July. So moved.
On the motion, any comments? Being none? All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. 4G, special permit again, 180 Newbury Street. Counselor Gamash?
Move to continue that to July 13th. So moved.
On the motion, any remarks? Being none? All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Reports of committee. Good luck. Counselor McGinn, Finance Committee.
Thank you for your well wishes, Madam Chair. The Finance Committee, the council met early this evening, present for the committee were Counselors Gamash, Gould, Manny Martin, Turco, and myself as chair, also present with Counselors Peach, Daigle, O'Neil, Melville, and Rozignol. We had two items on the agenda. The first item was ordinance amendment. Section 18-20, schedule of compensation for part-time positions. Section 1821, rates of compensation for full-time positions not subject to collective bargaining. Section 1820A, schedule of compensation of hourly rate positions not subject to collective bargaining. Section 18-43, fringe benefits for municipal employees of the City of Peabody excluding fire, police, electrical, and school personnel. The information, the overarching information was presented by his honor of the mayor. First portion of the item had to do with an ordinance for employees' cost of living adjustments. The mayor categorized his overarching concerns in this matter in three categories, retention, attraction, and competitive, being competitive in the market, in the labor market. Due to inflation pressure and the current state of the job market, cities experience some difficulty in finding qualified job candidates, and need, also feels the need to be more competitive with salaries to retain employees. May I provide some examples of where that has represented some issues for the city in the recent past? Kind of indicated the cost associated with turnover and a learning curve with new employees, and if we were to lose employees, the feeling, his feeling, was that he would need to come back to the council for something greater than a 3% increase. In addition, the mayor is also requesting some additional, the three positions have some significant adjustments, the Health and Human Services Director, the IT Director, and the, he said Park and Rec Supervisor, but I don't think that's the correct title. Believe that is, I think it's the Director of Forestry, but it's the Bryant Grant position. And then additionally, there's a request embedded in all this to add some positions in two areas, in a newly created Division of Social Services and with the Children's Museum. With respect to the Division of Social Services, the creation, the establishment of that group, there was a presentation made by Police Chief Griffin, Director of Health and Human Services, Ms. Cameron, and the current Director of the Healthy Peabody Collaborative, Ms. Grinnell. That presentation, there was a motion to receive that. Presentation dated the 8th of June, 2023, titled City of Peabody Health Department Division of Social Services, and there was some job descriptions for the proposed new positions in the Division of Social and Substance Abuse Services. So make that as a motion to receive here now, Madam President.
You heard the motion. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the, kind of the, one of the overarching themes in the presentation was that there should be, in the kind of straw man budget that was presented, including some out years, that there would be more settlement money coming from the opioid litigation, and that that could reduce the strain on any city funding needed in some of the out years over time. There were a number of comments, generally supportive of that particular initiative by several counselors, and then with respect to the other adjustments, there were a number of questions by various counselors about specific positions and stipends and so forth that were addressed by Mr. Gingras and the mayor. There was a motion made to eliminate from the list of positions the position of Enterprise Fund Manager. Madam President, and that motion passed a subcommittee by a vote of four to one, and I now might bring that for consideration of the full council. So moved.
On the motion, comments? Being none? Roll call. Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
No.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamash.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to one.
There was an additional request to, or ultimately a motion made to remove the position of Business Liaison from the list of positions on the list. That motion failed initially and upon reconsideration, so there's no action for the council on that, on that activity in committee. Subsequently, a motion was made by Counsel Gamache as follows. Move that it be ordained by the City of PBD, an ordinance amending section 1820, entitled Schedule of Compensation for Part-Time Positions, and section 1821, entitled Rates of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD, as follows. Section 1, the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan is hereby amended as follows. The code of the City of PBD as adopted on January 23, 1969, and amended, is hereby further amended by deleting from section 1820 and 1821, the ordinance establishing a compensation and classification plan, and substituting therefore the following. A, section 1820, entitled Schedule of Compensation for Part-Time Positions, is hereby amended by substituting, by substitution of the upper limit of annual compensation as follows for FY 2023 through FY 2025. And that schedule is as attached to the communication from his honor of the mayor dated May 17, 2023. Section B, section 18-21, entitled Schedule of Compensation for Full-Time Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining, is hereby amended by substitution of the upper limit of annual compensation as follows for FY 2023 through FY 2025. And that is, again, the schedule listed as attached to the communication from his honor of the mayor dated May 17, 2023, with the exception of the position that of Enterprise Fund Manager, as was previously removed by motion. And section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith or hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect as of the first day payday in July of 2023. Madam Chair, that motion passed the subcommittee by a vote of three to two, and I now bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
Motion, remarks on the motion? Counsel Turco?
Madam President, I'd like to ask that we amend the motion to include all the language read by Counsel McGinn, with the exception of the raises in 2023, '24, and '25 changed to 2% rather than 3%. So moved.
On the amendment, remarks on the amendment? Roll call.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
No.
O'Neil.
No.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
No.
Rozignol.
No.
Gamache.
No.
Melville.
No.
McGinn.
No.
Manny Martin.
No.
Motion fails. Eight to two.
We still have the motion.
On the motion, amendment fails on the original motion. Roll call.
Counselors Turco.
No.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
No.
Motion passes eight to two.
The next portion of that item, Madam Chair, dealt with the ordinance that's in place currently for minimum wage salaries, and that was presented to us by Director of Finance, Mr. Jengris. There were a couple of concerns raised about some of the newer positions being at the higher end of this minimum wage plus offering, and that was discussed, and ultimately, a motion was made by Counsel Gamache as follows. City of PBD, an ordinance amending the classification and compensation plan of the City of PBD, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD, as follows. Section 1, that's section 18-20A, entitled Schedule of Compensation of Hourly-Rated Positions Not Subject to Collective Bargaining, and Classification of Compensation Plan of the City of PBD, Massachusetts, by amending, inserting in place thereof hourly-rated positions not subject to collective bargaining, will have a minimum rate equal to the current Massachusetts' minimum wage, with the option of adding up to 10 levels at 50 cents per level, then another $1 for 10 more levels to the current minimum wage rate. The maximum amount that can be added to the minimum wage is $15. And that remaining schedule is as presented in the attachment to the communication from his honor of the mayor dated May 17, 2023. Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall be effective upon passage and shall take effect as provided by law. Madam Chair, that motion passed the Finance Committee by a vote of four to one, and I now bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
On the motion, any amendment to the motion? Nope. On the motion, comments? Roll call.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
No.
Motion carries. Nine to one.
The next portion of that item dealt with a request to adjust the language in the ordinance related to fringe benefits. That was presented by the Director of Finance, Mr. Jengris. Counselor Turco had indicated, and was confirmed by Mr. Jengris, that there was some, he had done some rough calculations on the impact of this, and that overall, the impact was somewhere in the range of $60,000 annually. After that brief discussion, there was a motion made by Counsel Gamache as follows. Move that City of PBD, an ordinance amending the ordinance establishing fringe benefits for municipal employees of the City of PBD, excluding Fire, Police, Electrical, and School Personnel, of the code of the City of PBD, section 18-43, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of PBD, as follows. Section 1, that the ordinance establishing fringe benefits for municipal employees of the City of PBD, excluding Fire, Police, Electrical, School Personnel, and any other employees covered by the collective bargaining, be amended as followed. A, by deleting the title of said ordinance and inserting in place thereof the following: An ordinance establishing fringe benefits for municipal employees not covered by collective bargaining of the City of PBD. B, by deleting from subsection A of section 4, entitled Longevity, the amounts awarded for various periods of full-time continuous service, and inserting in place thereof longevity holidays, personal days, funeral, and civic duty leave, shall be equal to the benefits received by employees covered under the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, State Council Number 93, Local Number 364. C, by deleting section 13, medical insurance, and inserting in place thereof the following, effective July 1, 2019, the City of PBD shall follow the PBD Public Employee PPEC Agreement for Contribution to Employee Health Plans and Related Benefits. Section 2, all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent herewith are hereby repealed. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect upon passage as or as otherwise provided by law. Madam President, that, Madam Chair, that motion passed the Finance Committee unanimously, and I now bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
On the motion, remarks being none. Roll call.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamache.
Yes.
Melville.
Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
Madam Chair, there was also an observation made by Counselor Turco that the salary and fringe benefit ordinances do not exist online. That has been the case, I believe, for several decades. I guess they've never been online, so I guess it's always been the case. Counselor Turco is looking to rectify that and made a motion that salary and fringe benefit ordinances be put online, and that motion passed the committee unanimously, and I now bring it for consideration of the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any remarks? Being none. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That completes my reporter committee.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. I have to say, you did an excellent job running that meeting, and I would suggest to the City Council President next year.
Madam Chair.
Well, I'm going to take it back.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the kind words, but I've left one item off. So.
All right, I'll hold my thought.
Hold that thought. We did have a second item on the agenda, beyond a multipart first item, and that was a transfer of funds, cable fund expense, in an amount of $215,212.94. That was presented to us by the Director of Finance, Mr. Jengris. This is a routine procedure to move monies into the funds they primarily use to fund the PAT. There was a motion made on this by Counsel Gould, move to approve the transfer from receipts, Reserve Cable Fund, count number 270000033017, an amount of $215,212.94, to Cable Fund Expense, count number 270000053007, an amount of $215,212.94. Madam Chair, that motion passed the committee unanimously, and I now bring it for consideration to the full council. So moved.
You heard the motion. Any remarks on the motion? Being none. Roll call.
Counselors Turco.
Yes.
Daigle.
Yes.
O'Neil.
Yes.
Peach.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Rozignol.
Yes.
Gamache.
Melville. Yes.
McGinn.
Yes.
Manny Martin.
Yes.
Motion carries ten to zero.
And now that actually does complete my reporter committee. Thank you, Madam Chair.
It was a year entitled to, you know, a little error. But I would suggest to whoever's the City Council President next year that that subject mattered its own evening, because that was an interesting yet lengthy meeting, an important one, so it needs more time. I think it should get its own night. Just my two cents. Moving right along to motions, orders, and resolutions. Counselor Turco.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I make the motion, I'll ask through you to Counselor O'Neil, do we have any update from the mayor or Dan regarding the responsible employer ordinance that they wanted to speak on?
Through the chair, we're going to be scheduling a legal affairs meeting to discuss that. So we don't have an update. They're going to present that, their issues and concerns. So I've got to schedule it. Dan for purchasing will be there, and I think Mike Jengris is going to be there, but they will respond with their concerns at that time. I've asked for something in writing. The mayor, at least the last time I checked, said that they would be there to present, so that's the update at this time.
Thank you very much, Counsel. I appreciate the update. So there's no need for me to file a motion on that. With that being said, move to receive item 8C, under suspension of the rules.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to receive and approve all papers being in order. Item 9A, inholder's license renewed for 2023, Holiday Inn and Suites, Boston, PBD, 1 Newbury Street.
You heard the motion. Any remarks on the motion? All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to receive and approve all papers being in order. Item 9B, Lodging House License Renewal for 2023, WJ Scores Realty Trust, 59 Walnut Street.
You heard the motion. Any remarks on the motion? Being none. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to receive and approve all papers being in order. Item 9C, Junkyard License Renewal for 2023, Golden Link, 515 Lowell Street.
On the motion, remarks on the motion? Being none. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to receive and approve. Item 9F, Care Dimension 75, Sylvan Street, Denver, Mass. Request for a banner.
On the motion, any remarks? Being none. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Madam President, I'll take them both unless Counsel O'Neil has any objection to the block party for Hammack and Lindauer. Move to receive and approve all papers being in order. Two block parties, Hammack Road at Lindauer Street, July 22, 2023, 15 Brentwood to 27 Brentwood, August 5, 2023. So moved.
On the motion, remarks being none. All in favor, any opposed? It is a vote.
No further motions.
Go. Counsel Daigle.
Thank you, Madam President. No motions tonight.
Counsel O'Neil.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under suspension of rules, move to receive item 8F and refer that to legal affairs. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under suspension of rules, and a co-motion with Counsel McGinn, move to transfer the, last meeting there was a motion to refer the Stretch Energy Code to the Ad Hoc Committee on Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy, but that should be placed in legal affairs, so I wanted to do a co-motion with Counsel McGinn to move that to legal affairs. So moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No further motions, orders, or resolutions this evening.
Thank you, Counsel O'Neil. Counsel Peach?
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive and approve item 8B, Transfer Special Permit for Pulaski Acquisition at 58R, all papers being in order. So moved.
Comments on the motion? Being none. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9D for a transfer of motor vehicle license and set up a hearing.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam President. No further motions this evening.
Counsel Peach, Counsel Gould.
No motions, Madam President. Thank you.
Excellent, Counsel Gould. Counselor Rozignol.
No motions this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
We're moving right along. Counsel Gamache?
Yes.
In the updo.
Move to receive, that's what happens when you, you know, salon talk. Item 8A, application from Robert Mastercol at 212 Newbury Street for special permit application, move to receive and set up a hearing.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
No further motions.
Thank you, Counsel Gamache. Counsel Melville.
No motions this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel Melville. Counsel McGinn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7A and refer to the Finance Committee sitting as the committee of the whole. So moved. And on the motion, Madam Chair, just a reminder to everybody for the budget sessions, what you received tonight, and what we're taking in in this motion, is what you're going to have for a package, so please don't throw it away. You're not going to get another copy from the clerk. Retain that. Don't avoid your tendency to want to recycle, and hold on, because we don't want to make additional work for the clerk's office. Thank you, Mr.
And that is June 15. Correct, Counsel McGinn?
Correct. It's week. Correct, it's a week from tonight.
So we have our budget a week from tonight, June 15th.
Right, so we just need to vote on the motion.
Yeah, on the motion, any comments? All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7B and refer to the Finance Committee sitting as the committee of the whole, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item 7, move, under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 7C and refer to the Finance Committee sitting as the committee of the whole, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 9E and set up a public hearing, so moved.
All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 10A and adopt as advertised, so moved.
You heard the motion, remarks on the motion?
Yeah, on the motion. Madam Chair, this is a substantial bond order for capital projects that the council obviously voted to advertise, $10.6 million, $10,620,000. So obviously, roll call.
On the motion, roll call. Counselor Turco?
Yes.
Daigle?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Gomash?
Yes.
Melville?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries, ten to zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under suspension of the rules, move to receive item 10B and adopt as advertised.
On the motion, any remarks on the motion?
On the motion?
Counsel McGinn?
Yep, this is a significant change to the ordinance, Section 2816, sewer and water rates, the code of the City of PBD that was very significantly vetted in Finance. And again, obviously, a roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counsel McGinn. You heard the motion, remarks on the motion? Being none, roll call. Counselor Turco? Daigle?
Yes.
O'Neil?
Yes.
Peach?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Rozignol?
Yes.
Gomash?
Yes.
McGinn?
Yes.
Manning Martin?
No.
Motion carries, eight to one. And to the, Madam Clerk, do you have any reminders or any, anything for the council? We're good, okay. She says we're good. All in favor? Motion to adjourn. A motion to adjourn by Counsel Gomash. All in favor, any opposed? It's a vote. Good night, PBD.